Well, it is six o'clock and this evening's regular city council meeting is in session. Roll call please. Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Dunleal. Councilmember Best. Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Tharp. Mayor Green.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to for an optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in Thank you very much. And I would attend a motion to approve the agenda.
One more than would super the agenda.
Five seconds. We don't we vote on that not a roll call but a Call of favor. Can you post? Thank you. Okay. So time for public comments about items not on the agenda. Have anyone in the building like to make public comment and say your name and address?
Good evening everybody. I'm Nancy Bailey. I live at 711 Main Street. And I'm also the interim president of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce as well as a business owner on Leadville Exchange. I came to listen to the conversation around sales tax comparison, but since I'm here, I might as well give you all the love day on the rock of the chamber. We've made a lot of progress in a couple of months. We've gone from two board members to six board members and a team of eight and a part-time staff. I heard to get us get this off the ground. So for those of you who aren't aware, there's a group of us and a lot of support from all of you in the room and the business community around reinventing and reorganizing our hundred-year-old Chamber of Commerce and we're really excited about that. So I just wanted to, and we're going to be your partner. So use us as a resource, use us as that entity as communication with the business community. You want real-time information about the impacts of local events. We'll have things like impact surveys going out to businesses, communications, business after hours. We are here to make an official announcement. We are having our first event, our business after hours in October of this year. So it's going to be a sneak peek preview. You're going to start seeing communications and you know, I have mentioned this before, but I will reiterate. We are organizing with the funds that we have and a lot of soliciting of supporters in the local community. But as you go into your budget season and preparing for this year and hopefully you're planning for the next three years strategically, really starting not prioritizing business assistance, economic development in ways that we can assist our businesses here. So that we can get through what is foreseeable to be a continued challenging time and a reduction in sales tax revenue. So I'm interested in that tonight. So I'm that's that's a wrap day. Any questions?
Thanks Nancy.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Jane?
Yes, it is. Jane Hartson, 172 Rafferty Drive. I'm here on behalf of PB Swims. PB Swims board upon pro promotion, second discussion voted to move forward with our citizens initiative to put a half a penny tax on the ballot with pending passage, tax revenue going to operate and maintain an affordable aquatic center. On behalf of PB Swims, thank you all, city council members, the mayor, city administrator Laura Simonson, deputy clerk Sarah Bushman. Thank you, Councilman Best and Councilman Luna Leal for the sales tax force. We really appreciate the city listening to us. So thank you and we'll stay in touch for sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Anyone else in chambers? Would anybody online like to make public comment? Okay. Going once, going twice, moving on. Love it. Consent agenda. So I need this or do you worry? What's that consent agenda?
Uh, yes. So there are three items on the consent agenda. As you know, they are all included at once with the motion. So we so I sent out an encouragement to council to get any questions to staff about any of those matters in advance. So that we did not have to pull any of those from the consent agenda given the length of tonight's meeting. So hopefully any questions of staff were answered in advance. And with that, Mayor Rotella, you can ask for a motion.
Okay. Does anyone have any concerns about the consent agenda or feel like anything should be pulled from it? Longley.
Luna Leal still heard the consent agenda.
Every second.
Now roll call. Please. Uh, Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Uh, so thank you all. And the applicant was here for the St. Patrick's Day practice parade. So with that speediness, it has been proved.
Great. May I approach the dais?
You may.
Luke Fink in 408 West 7th Street. Greetings and salutations from our sister city Alleghys West Cork, Farah, Ireland. The Fitzfinkins went over to Ireland this summer and we had a blast. Alleghys sends their best and their thanks. When you walk into the Alleghys Copper Mine Museum, I can tell you right now, you walk in the door, beautiful building that they have renovated. All volunteers, right on the left is a brand new Bill Carrington picture of Leadville up on the east side, right as you walk in the door. Just to your right is also now a little miniature Liam O'Sullivan that is a tiny little sculpture of the sculpture we have out at the Evergreen Cemetery. Thanks again to city council for making that a reality over the past eight to 10 years. The fifteenth was festival day, which has been going on over a hundred years in Alleghys. It's always the fifteenth, no matter what day of the week it is. Highly suggest you go and check it out. Lots of horse racing. And while they might have been miners in the past, they're now currently sticking with the horse races, some barrel races. It looked a little bit like frozen dead guy days. On the thirteenth, for the practice parade's a big weekend. Friday night, the thirteenth, over at the old church, we will be hosting the Belfast Theater troupe. From Belfast, they're going to be putting on the green and the blue. The basic, the basic premise is you have two police officers, one from the Republic of Ireland meets a police officer from Belfast and how they get along during the troubles. It's $20 per person. Please come see us. They are from Belfast at the old church. On Saturday, the fourteenth, we have the parade at noon, parade at noon. We'll travel this normal route, we'll travel this normal route. There is going to be then a convocation out at the memorial at three. And a convocation is a time for people to get together, give speeches, songs, remembrances. It'll be a very solemn event. Please come and see that. Also, our sculptor Terry Brennan from Wicklow, which is just about a half hour south of Dublin, who we stayed with for three nights on our trip over to Ireland, is going to be coming over and talking about the second sculpture, which will most likely, after a series of fundraising, be going on the plinth. And this sculpture will represent the 50% of the people who are buried out there because we figured that the miners is technically a little bit misleading as 50% are women and children. All right. It is the average age is 22 and half are under the, half, half are under the age of 18, average age 22. So hopefully you can come out and see that. That'll be, it's very stark. It's very touching. That'll be Saturday at three out at the, out at the cemetery. At 5:30 that night at the Healy House, Jim, Dr. Walsh, who did a lot of the legwork with getting the names, will be up at the Healy House. Healy House up on the lawn, they will be giving a presentation about why the Leadville miners and Leadville workers still matter today with his Romero troupe. So we hope you can make it out. It is a full weekend. I know it's already a lot going on that we can pedal the park and also on you can send agenda down at the pastime. So great. Thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate you and next year we'll aim for the twentieth. I'll sit you.
Yeah. Moving on to department reports. City administrator first.
Great. Thank you. I wanted to start with some thank yous. First of all, to the streets department and the police department. We successfully got through the busiest of our event season with both Leadville 100 Bike and Run and Boom Days. So there were definitely some heavy lifts with that. We did send off your thank yous to the Avon Police Department, Pittkin County Sheriff's Department and Aspen Police Department for their help covering the Boom Days. And I just wanted to thank streets. Everything went fabulously as far as our aspects of covering these events. We know they're quite a strain and having them all right, one right after the other. We are appreciative of staff putting in that extra work and and understand your request for time off after this. I'm looking to tell you when I say that. I just wanted to say that a couple of things to touch on. We have requested a meeting with Lifetime to talk about what went well for them, what went well for us, what could be improved for next year. The one issue I think that we are absolutely in address is that as far as I'm aware, no one on city staff was aware there was going to be a helicopter. And as you may recall, we were informed that there would be no helicopter when the TUP was approved. And we were notified that if there was going to be one, we would have two weeks' notice. And I just want to let you all know, I was not given any two weeks' notice nor was anybody on our staff. So we will be addressing not only that information coming to us, but also the, the height that the helicopter was flying because I think it was much lower than FAA regulations. And we are internally looking at revising our temporary use permit process in 2025 for a number of things. Looking at improvements to the parade process and also our process for permits for big events such as the race and run. I don't know if this was a good idea, but I did post on social media that if people have concerns about the race and feedback about things that can be approved, they can email me. So we shall see. I've seen some things that residents are still concerned about and we also heard some strong concerns at the strategic planning workshop about the stress. So I think that's something that we definitely need to work with Lifetime on the impact of the race. If you have specific concerns or specific photographs of things that were concerns or specific ideas to improve that process for the bike and run, I certainly appreciate it. I think we have less concerns about Boom Days. I think there was one issue with some remaining tape on the sidewalks, but hopefully you've gotten that taken care of. A couple of other things I wanted to let you know, we did have the forty, 440th Civil Affairs Battalion of the US Army Reserve visit us on Friday. So this is Officer Aaron Barnett's company. And as I explained in the last city administrator's report, they generally try and do a continental US training program once a year. And so they selected Leadville this year. I met with them and requested that the scope of their project be helping the city internally with a emergency preparedness plan such as delegation of authorities, chain of command, how information would flow either to the council and electeds or to staff in case of emergency. So people can understand where and when they would get information. They were very excited about that. I met with them at 8:00 AM on Friday. The mayor met with them. I think Councilmember Thomas met with them. They also met with the sheriff and a handful of other folks in town. They did give us a certificate of appreciation for our time. Their only request is that it cover up the special forces certificate of appreciation over in the bookcase. We can have a vote on that later. But anyways, so they were definitely appreciative of our time. They are going to present us with recommendations that we can implement, which I think would be fantastic. Because we really internally, I know we have the county's emergency operations plan. Their intention is not to touch any of that, but just internally our processes in case of an actual emergency. I wanted to talk about see, I'm not stealing anybody's thunder anymore. I wanted to, I'm sure the mayor will talk about the strategic planning town hall. I will just say it was fantastic and really appreciate the turnout, the fact that we Mr. Cholch indicated that this turnout that we had in Leadville was probably the biggest turnout he's seen for such a strategic planning event. So that was really exciting to see. We are going to start working on goals and budget for 2025. I know Finance Director Hewlett has been working on that. I think I would like to talk about scheduling for our first work session on that. And I am seeing that we have a city council work session already scheduled for September 10th. Was that for, I mean, there's nothing on the agenda setting. Was that for planning? Would I be commandeering that? Or is it possible that we can do a goal-setting work session then?
This is September.
September 10.
September 10. That is nine seventeen. Is the, the potential work session request?
Yeah. That's a regular council meeting and it's our regular council meetings, as you can see, are filling up pretty quickly. So I'm trying to balance the length of those meetings. So right now, if council, this is usually my best chance of getting you all on dates at September 10th. Would that be possible for a work session to hear from department heads regarding their goals? I would have to do it by phone. Yeah, virtually is, okay. If that's general consensus, I would like to pencil that in for now for, for the department goals. Okay, couple other things.
Question, Lori?
Yep. Yes, someone had it.
I'm sorry to interrupt. What time? Would that mean more department heads on September 10th? We have an officer meeting at 8:30.
AM or PM? It would be. Okay. Yeah, I think then I don't think that would be a conflict. That's if you don't mind passing along that information.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Great, thank you. A couple other quick announcements. So we are a member of the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, which is a fantastic organization. They have a housing policy task force, which has been very active on the legislative front for housing policy. Christie Galarza was our city representative. We got special permission to have Christie be our representative. Normally it is a elected official or, you know, city employee. But because Christie was so interested involved in that issue, CAS made an exception and allowed her to be our representative. As you know, she's moved on. And so now Supriyano Gorel is our new representative to the CAS Housing Policy Task Force. And he has made the introductions there. So Leadville will continue to have representation there. So we thank Supriyano for being willing to do that. I don't know if I should even bring up excavation, but we are still in excavation season. And as you can see, there's excavation going on outside city hall right now. This is the sanitation district project. I wanted to give you the information that we have on that. It it is CD PHD required for sanitation to replace these lines. Yes, it is on Eighth Street. That is unfortunate. We were not aware that this was part of sanitation's plans when Eighth Street was repaved. Very excited that sanitation district has, Josh is their new executive director because we are, we have a good relationship with him. And so our streets department manager and I and Mr. Cummins met with sanitation and we are going to have regular meetings to coordinate going forward. Where we have paved that it is not something that is planned to be excavated. Given the nature of our aging infrastructure, we do have emergency digs a lot. So we can't plan for those. I think someone said in comments in the Magellan survey that we absolutely can't let anybody dig once they, something's been repaved. Well, if a water line breaks, we have to let somebody dig unless you want to have a house flooded for, you know, a year. So with the excavation occurring on A, that project, they have assured us that Eighth Street will look as good, if not better, once they have finished repainting it. So yes, you heard that from me and we can hold on to that. But I think, you know, better coordination, our streets department manager and I have been talking a lot about coordination so that we do not have digs on things that we have just repaved. Excel Energy. Let's see. So they, Excel Energy has a Leadville to climax Robinson bracket rebuild project. And they said it will begin this month or early September. Initial work will include grading and preparations for foundations that will hold new transmission poles. The work will be conducted primarily northward from a location near the intersection of Highway 91 and 24. Several crews and some heavy equipment will be used to perform this work. They also may use a helicopter to efficiently carry equipment and poles to locations not accessible by trucks or cranes. I have a project webpage that we can put on our website with more information about that. I think that's it. I always like to end on a fun note. As we have been working to clean and organize city hall, one of the things we found was a photo of when the Olympic torch was carried through Leadville. So if you're sad about the Olympics being over, you can head upstairs, see the photo. The best part is that one of our employees, Alex Willis, is in the photo and he carried the torch when he was 12. So just a little fun fact there. Oh, last thing I wanted to remind you all. Next Tuesday, we're having our joint work session with the county regarding the animal shelter. And so the, the purpose behind that was to have a joint work session with the county so that you could, everyone could be educated on the background, operations and fundamentals of the animal shelter. So then we could look at scheduling, you know, basically further discussions to discuss the IGA. I am going to reach out to the county because I'm very confused that I just received an email within the last few hours that they are having a meeting that morning to discuss the animal shelter operations, animal control and going forward regarding the animal shelter. I was confused because I thought that was the purpose of our joint meeting and we were completely unaware that the county was going to have a meeting that morning. So yeah, the VOCC would like to invite you to join their discussion regarding an overview of the Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter current and potential operations and services and animal control service levels for the Lake County community. This will be at the 8:27 work session at 9:00 AM at the VOCC hearing rooms. This will be an opportunity to discuss these items before the work session at 6:00 PM. So maybe there was a disconnect there, but animal shelter manager Cosco and I had been meeting with Commissioner Feedler and we ran the presentation by him that we were intending to present. And he felt that that was a good step towards the education before we had any discussion. So I will get with the county and we will find out where the disconnect happened on that. But the purpose of the meeting next Tuesday night is to hear about the background of the animal shelter and operations and everything else. So I hope that you will all be there for that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Certainly back to the lifetime meeting.
Yep.
Who will be involved in that meeting?
Well, at this point, I have just sent a text request to Tamara Jenly requesting a meeting. It hasn't been scheduled, but I'm open to input as to who should be present for that.
Okay. And there will be space made for, to address some other resident concerns?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, you know, the whole point of the meeting from our perspective is what went well and what can be improved. And I think one of those.
That's the issue. Sorry to interrupt you. The, so the, this ground swell of, you know, anti-race series stuff. A lot of the, the, the part that rises above writing is not about what goes well and what doesn't, but what could they be doing for the community? To sort of balance the distraction that they made from the community. So that's what I'm wondering if there's going to be space made for that.
Hundred percent. And I think there's some preparation that I will be doing in advance of that.
Okay.
So there are other communities that host large races where there has been the same concern and friction. And I would like to get with those communities and I would like to get with those race promoters and find out what steps they have taken to address community concerns. And looking forward to us, what are we going to request of lifetime race series? So for example, you were at the strategic planning town hall and one of the concerns was economic business development. I think one of the things we can request in lifetime is some type of literature that promotes our businesses in town. There's also the flip side of the impact on the residents nearby. And I think we need a laundry list. Preliminary, but we need a laundry list of things that we can request of the race series to minimize that impact. Because I think they've done, they've taken some steps. They've tried to educate the riders and the racers, but I feel as though the friction is still there.
This is just my personal opinion, but I think, you know, having them promote local businesses is aiming the way to go. And I know a lot of people in this community that would agree with that. So
Well, I guess my, my point being, that is not the only thing. And I don't want that to be the takeaway from what I'm saying is I think we're going to sit down and we're going to have a lot of things to talk about.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. But I am open to the input about not only specific concerns of here's a photograph of this thing that happened, but also broad concerns of, you know, traffic and respect and all of those things. So broad to small.
Thank you.
Is the city aware? I got a notice this afternoon that there's a town hall in Twin Lakes today about the race series being attended by Tamara and Sheriff Speller.
At six o'clock.
It's at six thirty tonight. Yeah. Was the city even aware that they were having an open, a town hall to discuss the race series?
We are not informed about that.
It seemed like really late notice. I didn't see it.
Notice that that was made due to concerns with specifically a bear and issues with that. So and that was raised really recently. Only reason I know Seaport was involved in part of that. So they're attending also to meet with the community members. So it was really late notice and it's a reaction to a situation that happened in that community.
Okay, very good.
I definitely think, well, and, and you know, improving communication, I think one of many, many ideas is making sure that we have deadlines for the TUPs to put before the council. And one of the suggestions is to separate them out so that we can consider them more carefully. You know, our concerns were that the race series came to us with requests that were not in their TUPs, you know, the Tuesday before the race. I want to thank the streets department for accommodating those requests. But the communication really needs to be tightened up. And so we're going to start working on that now. And also I think, like I said, there, there's a very large race. You can look it up, that all the tension, the race in, in Steamboat. Where the communities have the same concerns. And I would love to meet with this community. And so not only the city and county, but the race promoter and figure out what did, what, what did they, what did, what did they implement? And again, what worked there and what are they still finding is, is friction. Cause it's. It's a big deal.
May we get an update on Airline Spruce and the ongoing repairs and?
Yes, I, uh, okay, so a couple of updates on that. I asked, inquired. Two things, uh. So I checked in with our property manager. Okay. And um, on Wednesday the fourteenth, and they were gonna check with um K W to find out what's the status. I think we had, I think I don't know if I reported this last time, but K W had some uh turnover in staff. And so that was delaying some of the repairs from our end, uh. I can toss this to Ms. V Hill, but from our end, we had, Ms. V Hill went out with her um. Property manager and K W. Mm-hmm. And so we're, we're sort of, we have all of our claims, correct, all the claims have been submitted. And so we're just waiting for them to give us the go-ahead on that. Um, they did, uh. Double-checked the basement unit and they did not detect any mold. But we are, I'd ask them to just make sure that that unit is, otherwise that unit is, I think, good to go.
How many of, so we have five units total in the building.
Correct.
How many of the units are affected by these repairs that are currently not rental?
Three.
Three of the five?
Mm-hmm.
We still have one tenant in the building, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you know, the interesting thing about it was it, those water leaks were unrelated. But damaged. Uh, two rooms. And the kitchen area. And then, like I said, there was the concern about water being in the basement. There wasn't a concern that we were there getting the front door out. But it apparently had musty smell afterwards, but they've tested it. There is not any mold, but so maybe you can narrow it out a little bit.
If there is one more unit available that would be occupiable currently and has been occupied.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the units that is um, what I would say is more than a bed and breakfast type of unit. There's not any closet space. It's, it's.
Kind of a studio.
Small studio.
Yeah.
But we definitely, uh, you know, I made it available to the school district when they were looking for housing. I wanna work with the hospital to see, I think it would be a great opportunity to partner with either of those. Uh. Community needs for housing, I think they may have needs that would be more amenable to a small unit like that, so.
And. Unless somebody else says something, are there any updates on the? Rec Center building that the city owns? Have we, have we made any progress there or we?
Yep.
What's going on?
Uh, well, so actually, uh. Is here, I think she's probably here to listen in on the sales tax um discussion. But so lots of things are happening. So the um, the University of Colorado Students Technical Assistant Program. They came out and did a boom, at Boom Days. And engaged with a lot of community members about some of the potential designs. Uh, we met with the students and their um professor just last week. To talk about renderings and where the students are in the project and what um product we're looking for from them. So that is in the works also as far as our work on the building itself. Um, we are going to have a company come in and do uh mold testing. Cause you know, that underground tunnel is of concern. And also to test the rest of the building that um for asbestos, cause I know there's lots of concern. Um, so we are getting that done. And I'm hoping that uh, we, we got the contract. I'm, I think there was some conversation about that today, but I'm hoping that could be maybe to start them as early as next week.
Just the testing phase?
Correct.
Any other repairs going on over there right now? Being done by the city?
Uh, no.
Just playing the bass.
Correct. And do you, I, if you wanna come up to the lecture, didn't mean to put you on the spot. It's just hard to hear people from the back of the room.
I mean, the roof, yeah, we're, we're.
Oh, right.
We need to get them repaired, which is a pretty small repair, but that's why one of this. Um, auditorium space has just like big buckets of water left over from the spring melt. And so that roof has to get repaired so that further mold damage doesn't occur. Um, and then, yeah, the testing for asbestos mold is, is happening. Hopefully, start to finish, that'll be about six weeks from like getting that contract signed to having that report back. And that will be a big piece of information for us because asbestos can turn a project into like seven thousand to like many hundreds of thousands. So we'll, we'll.
And this, this particular contract is only for the testing. It's not for any remediation.
Right, yeah, we don't know what remediation will be until the tests come back.
And, and just to remind everybody, the prior property owner did remediate the carpet and the ceiling tiles in the auditorium. So that, I think, was a uh twenty thousand dollars, but that, that has been remediated. So the question is, is there anything else in the other parts of the building? The auditorium was in, in addition. So different um construction timeframes. The other thing I forgot to mention was um, the Lake Haven Community Fund. Has met with Ms. Barrett and I and expressed uh interest in doing grant writing for us. So we are gonna be working with John McBartry on um pursuing some uh planning grounds and so forth for that. But they're definitely wanting to be a partner with us. And Lauren sent out a great, you know, summary update. I know, I got it. Um.
I got it in my working hour, but not mine sitting now.
Laurie, I think you were on it. Could you forward to all council members?
Sure.
Um, cause it has a more thorough summary.
That's great. I did receive that. Thank you.
Apologies, yeah. I sent back to everyone who's managed cleaning in the last six months, so apologies, I haven't gotten to follow you.
So what we should do is we should make sure that I make sure that gets in the packet. But Ms. Barrett has been doing monthly reports like that for us.
Yeah, it would be nice to see this.
Thank you. I think we got a, a couple in the packet, but I'm, we'll, we'll make sure. Yeah, we did. Yeah, it'd be nice to continue again. Thank you.
Also, just add in addition to, so the, the, the University Technical Assistant Program. You tap uh those students, they came up, they have, they had boards and like renderings for the communities interact with at Boom Days. And the pictures of those boards will be brought to the next advisory meeting, which is this Thursday. That's open to people that have been involved with the process since we started in February. So look at that and say like, is there something we still want and need? What feedback do we have? Are we ready to turn this into something? Which is also part of a much larger conversation about what else is being prioritized in our community. So it, it's not just as straightforward as like, this is here, this is what we want, we're moving that into the next phase. We're also talking about outfits into everything else going on and. And all we know, that's a lot of things, so. Uh, if anyone has feedback that I have, if you haven't already reached out to me and wanna talk more about it, I'm very open to hearing your thoughts. I've spoken, I think, to most of you, but I think I haven't gotten to you yet, Joey, so I can reach out and we can talk more about that.
Thank you, yes.
The other issue is I appreciate the county's feasibility study. Folks did reach out to me and I sat down and had a nice speaking with them and explained sort of what our vision is. And um, their consultants are great, glad to hear that. Then if you're going to, you know, try and occupy these spaces and provide these, then those are things that we will not have to, you know, duplicate. In their concept of the multi-purpose facility.
And also add, I'm on the advisory committee for the county's feasibility projects. So everything that's been going on, I've thought of, I'm noticing that, paying attention to it. It, it's, and that interacts a lot with our, our project too, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lauren. Any other questions for Laurie about the ministry, of course? I have one. Um, you said regular meetings have been set up with sanitation. We are going to set up regular meetings. We need to get through this excavation season first. But there's definitely a willingness, um, I think on sanitation's part and our part to have better coordination, so yeah. Great, and um, could we do a similar thing with Parkville? Well, my idea is to essentially try and create meetings for all of us instead of separate meetings for all of us. So it would be um, Blaine McCurry, we met from Excel and um Parkville Sanitation and the city or the primary. Right. You know, and I, as much as we like to try and promise that we're all gonna not dig, you know, anything. I, I, I think better coordination is absolutely necessary. I hope it means that we're paving things that will stay paved for a while.
Meeting with Greg, um, the manager of Parkville, my friend, so I think it's not passing by such a long, if you like.
Yeah, and well, once we get through this excavation season, yeah, absolutely, having, you know, maybe meetings every other month or something like that would be great. So thank you. Yeah. Yeah. All right, let's move on to the Streets Department. Mr. Manina, thank you for being here.
This department will be fairly quick. Uh, this month we were heavily involved in cleaning ditches and installing culverts. And preparing for the races of Boom Days. Uh, the guys were very busy, um. Getting all the stuff, they spent a lot of time getting our signs and sandbagging. We had to make new ones, cause all of them were old. So um, other than that, uh, street sweeping, getting ready for the, the events and everything. We spent most of our time just concentrating on those kind of things. Uh, we are almost finished with the uh culverts that we installed. I'm not sure if everybody knows about the bottom second street, how that was always flooding out. Well, we installed uh two of uh, two sections of the thirty-inch culvert that we received last year. Uh, we're looking to use this year on that and these last storms. We have no problems and stuff, so we're preparing for the races right now. And also getting ahead for springtime next year with all the culverts that we've been working on. Uh, we're trying to identify anyplace else that needs any more culverts, but right now, uh, this last couple of weeks. We're just so involved with the races and everything that, particularly all of those things. Um. So Sidewise and Excel, they've been doing pretty well about their digs and their closures and being very. Upfront with me daily about where they're gonna have clothes. We're making sure that there's plenty for traffic and local traffic to get around, never have any closures that are too close to each other. And they've been very good about that. Uh, J H L doing the sanitation, uh, I've been very easy to work with as well. And their projects are a little slower than the others. They've got quite a bit more digging to do. And they've made a quite a bit of, well. Compromises in what they need to do, repairing the asphalt and everything that we requested and required them to do. So I'm just staying on top of that to keep them on pace for what they need to do. Uh, they do know that they have the October first cutoff date. Uh, they were misunderstood, thought they could dig all the way into February. That is not gonna happen, so they're rushing on their jobs, but they're, I'm still staying on top of them to make sure they're doing everything. Uh, we've got another project coming up next, starting next week. So when this intersection finally opens as they move up Eighth Street. Fifth Street will be the next intersection to be blocked off. Uh, last year we had discovered a um. Vault that was caving in. And we got in touch with everybody involved and we found out it actually belongs to one of the communication companies. And they're coming in to replace that entire vault, so they're having to dig. A twelve by fourteen pit right at the intersection of Fifth and Harrison. So that's the size of the.
Thank you, party.
It's all old brick. They were telling me that uh they found bricks down there and dates back to early nineteen hundreds. That's how long that vault has been there, so. Hopefully they'll have no problems. They're claiming that they can get it done in the week and even have it paved hopefully by the end of the week. If not, beginning of the following week and they're not paving this. That whole section, the thing we did, uh, give back to our standards.
Pretty much together. That's all we've been concentrating on, so. Any questions? What paving projects do you have left for this year? Um, what paving projects do you have left for this year? So you got done in front of the.
Yes, we did get done in front of Fifth Street, um, from the postal office, that was done. Uh, every time we have, well, chose a spot to pave. Either Parkville or J H L or. Somebody has a reason to dig it up on emergency digs.
So we saw in your report that two-thirds of your paving budget is still there. So we just haven't been able to spend it, cause we can't do the paving.
I wanted to do Capitol Hill. Parkville's digging on the top of Capitol Hill. I wanted to do.
So we're just on the one this summer so far.
Yeah, so far, okay. But we're gonna, uh, be meeting more and we're gonna check out and make sure. Uh, that's part of the reason why I'm meeting so much with Josh and he's been very helpful with uh projects that uh. Last year when I checked, none were there. Now, this year, since they have the new manager there, they came up with a three-year program that somebody has not shared. So we're gonna get a little good information from him so we can next year be a lot help for areas. Our base is doing a little bit of extra budget for next year.
Many, what we were, well, Mr. Manina and I just uh spoke today. And our goal is to have a meeting uh soon with also including the mayor. So that we can figure out what can we prioritize. So our paving contractor has a little more bandwidth right now. So we wanna make sure if, if there's anything else we can fit in before the end of the season, we'll fit it in.
Yeah. He is gonna be back in September to finish all the Parkville cuts. So he's gonna be together to those along, so. We're hoping to see something in the other demos as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, for ten minutes, we open a window.
It, it, we, we have to take a quick, it actually takes two people. Okay, team effort.
Hannah Gerges.
Well, we're crossing. Question. It's not possible to do while you're filming. Okay, moving on to the Peace Department. Do you have anybody or? Uh, well.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure.
Yes.
Go ahead, Chief.
Seem to be having problems with my. All right, well, I'm having problems with my uh camera, so I'm just gonna have to go without. Uh, so, as everybody knows, on July twenty-eighth, uh, an ongoing feud between two families. Uh, ended in about a thirty-person brawl on Harrison. Uh, two people arrested on the scene, six turned themselves in on warrants issued that week. This is not a random act of violence in the town, but an ongoing issue between two groups of people who primarily live in the county. Because of this, Laurie arranged for law enforcement from Aspen P D, Pitkin S O and Avon P D. Out of an abundance of caution to help us out, oh, provide extra security over Boom Days. As there were credible threats that uh, this might, this conflict might happen again. Tensions did flare up again on Saturday of Boom Days. Uh, there was an assault between members of the two groups on Harrison. Uh, bottles were thrown and there was a use of pepper spray. The three suspects involved were arrested within two hours of the event. Things have been quiet since then. Um. I think having the officers from out of Lake County help us out was huge. Um, the S O helped also arrange for help from Colorado Rangers. This was something we used to do every Boom Days and it's definitely something worth revisiting for next year. Um, other than that, for Boom Days, minor issues with the exception of the assault. Uh, mostly vendor parking issues. And this is the second year in a row where there were no reported bar fights. Uh, since I've been, we're at the P D since two thousand eleven, these are the only two years where there have been no bar fights. So Boom Days is definitely quieting down. Uh. The Mountain Bike one hundred and Trail one hundred, minor traffic control issues. Uh, and some issues with lifetime staff not obeying P D orders, uh, stemming from movement of traffic control signage. This is all stuff that's minor and it's on everybody's radar to work out uh for next year. Uh, for all these events, Streets were a huge help in getting things set up for us, especially with signage. Um, Aspen P D actually emailed me today to thank us for recognition, recognition of their help. Uh, I believe the city sent them a letter, thank, a formal letter thanking them for their help. Um, other than that, P D and Streets both, we've, we've got a list of necessary fixes for uh event season next year. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I mean, what is going to talk to me? Uh, this isn't a question for Chief Prior, but a question for. The city, certainly a chance that we can talk to the police department to update their reporting forms there possibly to read. Just, and that might happen with any police chief anyway. But it's really hard to discern the new information because of the fact, because. They need to be updated and.
Why don't you and I, um, cover that in meeting? We have been working, um, so I have been working with our administrative staff in the police department to do that. But if they are still, what I have been asking for is feedback, if they're still not conveying the information or they're not as. Legible, um, let me know because they're working on.
Wonderful, thank you.
Anything else?
Well.
I, this is Dana, um, I would just also like that to add that some of those charts with the numbers, I don't know why the. Why the lines aren't showing up, but I had been working with, um, Perla and Joanna, the C S Os to try to get away from the multi-colored. Bar charts that were not meaningful and turn them more into charts. Uh, that, that to me are a little more understandable, at least as far as like. Numbers for certain things. I, I think it would be easier if they're, I don't know where the, where the lines went, but when we were. When we were developing these charts, um, those lines were there. So, um, Joey, please. Also reach out to me if you see a better way, um, that that's been an ongoing project, uh, with myself and. Some of the P D staff as well, um, just to get away from the multi-colored bar charts. So. Look forward to speaking with you about how better to display all information. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, that would be great. Right now, it's, it's just. Almost impossible to parse the information based on the format alone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's move on.
Back to parking tickets. Um, so I'm always thinking about parking tickets, and I'm really, thank you, Chief, for getting the parking tickets up, but I'm wondering what the payment rate. Is, do you have that so many report? I'm not seeing it.
I do not have the payment rate. I know there is an issue with getting people to pay. Um, that's just the nature of the beast with a traffic, it was basically an infraction like that, that isn't a. That isn't an actual criminal offense. A lot of people just. Drag it on and, and don't pay. Um. That's something that could be investigated as far as potentially hiring a third-party service to go after it, but. The amounts tend to be so small that, uh, I don't know if it would be cost effective.
I, I just wanted to, you know, I did reach, reach out to our staff about the, uh, parking tickets, and they did mention out of state folks are hard to collect from.
Yeah.
So, but in it, you know, if we do find it's something we want to pursue, we, I can look at a third party to help us collect those.
I was just curious mainly about the rate. I'm really happy to see when tickets are good, it should be, it's great. Yeah, just happy to see the tickets. Yes, thank you.
I do, I do wanna, I do wanna add, uh, kudos, especially to the C S Os during the events who. Really worked hard all through the events, uh, ticketing and taking care of traffic issues that arise at all of these.
Yeah, thank you, um. It seems like, uh, we could pretty easily generate how many tickets for getting a lot of shredding has been. Blacked and see a percentage. It'd be nice to see a visual. Um.
Yeah.
In the next, one of the next couple of meetings.
Okay.
And maybe correlate those with how many are out of state.
Maybe which states?
Yeah.
That would inform if it's worth.
We know which states we have.
We know, yeah, we don't need.
Okay, any other questions, though, Chief Brett?
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, fire department.
I think we had, uh, Chief Boyle, yes, he is sitting in for Chief Daley, who is on vacation.
Uh, good evening, everybody. A couple of highlights from our monthly report. The Type Three Engine three oh one is now. Now back, it was deployed to California for a very long twenty-one day assignment. Uh, we are, uh, down season. We're expecting our next wildfire. Season to start up again, if everybody's excited about that, at the end of August and beginning of September, but. Not so much for us because of this precipitation we keep getting, so we're looking pretty good so far for the county. In the city. Uh, happy to announce C M C just graduated another ten students out of a fire academy, so we, hopefully we will be able to snag. Some of them to, uh, join our resident reserve. Program, uh, update on some dollars. The, uh, cancer heart. April health benefit, we were able to get two thousand two hundred eighty dollars from, uh. Dola on that one, which is really good. We did unfortunately lose an engineer to another department. We just finished up a. A hiring process, so we're happy to announce two internal, one promotion and one resident reserve. That was, uh, in our program that is now full-time member. We did assist, uh, C M C with. The very needed Fire One Academy hazmat J P Rs, because we get the C S P hazmat trailer, which is a, a really cool prop for hand. On doing hazmat exercises and the much-needed Fire Two Academies for current Fire Ones that are moving up. In their certification process. Uh, from prevention, which I'm pretty familiar with, happy to announce we did have a great. Great turnout for the Ted Dujie camp, had about over seventy kids, which was about the same amount we had for. Helping out at boom days, we, uh, were able to help staff ninety percent of the, uh, the kids area for boom days. And the kids had a blast. They got their faces painted. They were able to do some digging for gems and then painting for gold as well as, uh. Jumping around in the bouncy house, so we were happy that we were able to provide, uh, the much-needed staffing that they needed for, for that area. Area, uh, end of report unless. There are any. Any questions for me for the fire department?
Thanks, Chief, any questions? All right, lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
From the H R.
Good evening, um, I'll start with super simple good news. Uh, we have. Yeah, another administrative assistance, but in a good way, because the last two we hired have. Been promoted within and it's worked out wonderfully, uh, but we now have Miss Brianna Ortiz, um, she has hit the ground running. She. Kind of. Takes initiative. She's been very, worked hands off, so she's been a great addition into what's needed in our administration and. And then I'm surprised Tony didn't mention this, but we did hire an equipment operator who started yesterday. Um, everything seems very promising, so, um, we're excited about that just before snow starts to fall. Um, the, we are, we should mention, we are, um, assisting him getting his, uh, C D L, though. This is true. He has experience on equipment, but for other reasons, you work on private property, you don't need a C D L, stuff like that, but. Obviously for us you do, so we are going to, um, help him get his C D L. Uh, we have worked with Hillary, the city attorney, on a training reimbursement agreement so that we can reassure some. Um, return on investment. So say, for example, someone does commit to one year. You know, or otherwise they owe back the city, the investment that we put in, um. It is prorated, so each month of completed employment with us, you kind of, you know, it's not all or nothing, but. We wanted to kind of secure more of a return on investment, and we want to invest in these trainings and certifications for employees. Um, so he is very ambitious. He started, um, before we even sent the offer letters. He got the book. He started looking for classes, so. Um, he is eager to get going. Um, the big stuff. Police chief process, this is the last time I'll be speaking about this before the decision, like the decision is made. So September twelfth, um, five thirty to seven thirty P M, we are having a town hall open to the community at Great. Um, refreshments will be provided. The finalists will have a chance to introduce themselves, uh, and they'll kind of just transition into a meet and greet, so community members, um, you know, city. Um, employees, council members can all engage with all of these finalists, um, freely, so. Um, they can ask the questions that maybe HR cannot legally ask, but you can kind of get a good sense of these candidates, um. So then September thirteenth, the day after that Friday. We will be having the finalist interviews, so we are going to have a professional panel. This panel will include, um, all fellow first responders, so. Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, um, dispatch, uh, Claire Steam from Emergency Management, so. That will kind of form one panel, and the other panel is going to be a community panel, so leaders of our community, nonprofits, um. Maybe hopefully the school instructions, you might spark it here, um. But still we'll have that, and then the, the third room will say will be, um, the hiring authority, so. See Administrator Simonson, um, so they will rotate, so we'll make it efficient. They're each going to be in an interview for a few hours, and then. Um, we'll have a large debrief to get everyone's, um, constructive criticism and feedback. Um, K R W associates will guide this whole process, time management, uh, form the questions, um. All those good things, and we'll do a debrief with the hiring authority for the afternoon, and. Uh, we would expect to have a decision made by that evening, if we don't feel like we need to sleep in for the weekend, but fair to say. Um, so that is the last huge chunk of the police chief search. Then we might have questions about it. Specifically. Okay, um. I kind of always keep up to date on this, composition openings, police officer, us and most other communities. Um, we have one candidate yet again rescind his application for personal reasons, nothing specific to our police department. Um, but we have two other candidates yet still in the pipeline, both are not post-certified, but, um. Interim Chief Brier has been helping, um, secure academy seats when we can. Um, he does have a grant for one academy seat, so. We're really trying to push those through. Uh, is there any other questions for H R that you may have? Never, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Paige. I really, I mean, it's kind of.
Hi, Peyton.
I've been on the clock since five, so excuse me if I get a little tongue tied. Um, had to take a dog down to Denver today for surgery. Um, so we've had almost a hundred and seventy-five animals in our care. Um, I think our current number was one seventy-three or one seventy-four as of today. Um, in July, we had an average of fifteen animals per day. The highest day, there was twenty-four animals. Um, as a reminder, there are. Six double-sided dog kennels and seven double-sided cat kennels at the shelter. In August, we had an average of twenty-four animals per day so far, with the highest day being thirty-four. Um, I do apologize, the chart there, those numbers kind of snuck into the bar. Zoom in here. Intake so far this year, we've had ninety-five, thirty-five of those impounds were from the city, sixty were from the county. Holds, we've had a total of twelve. Um, I am working on the statistics for not only this year, but since twenty twenty. To break all statistics down into city and county. Um, surrenders, we've had fifteen, seven through the city, eight through the county, and a total of thirty-one unclaimed strays. Um, further breaking it down, animals brought to the shelter, sixty-five have been brought, brought by private citizens. Twenty-five by the police department, fourteen from the sheriff's office, and three from shelter staff as we're driving into the office. On our outcomes, we've had thirty-three adoptions, so obviously we've had ninety-five intakes along with fifteen surrenders. And thirty-one of those ninety-five were unplanned. Um, we're still trying to push our adoptions, but. Unfortunately, nationwide right now, we're seeing a decrease in adoptions, um, COVID with the vet closures. And the vet shortage across the nation really put a damper on the low-cost clinics and affordable bayneuter, so we're seeing more unwanted litters or unplanned litters. Um, that have been coming into shelters and rescues. We have had seventy-four animals returned to their owners, sixteen repeat offenders, thirty-one unclaimed strays. Eleven transferred out and three euthanasias. If you check the next page. Um, in July, I returned from family leave, so fortunately I was not on vacation, um. We did track two socks, so you might have seen that on the news, Summit Daily News, CBS Channel Four, as well as Denver. Nine News have all done stories on it. We were contacted as well by. Outdoor magazine, I believe, um, so. Two Socks was a dog that was living at Turquoise Lake. From for sure, May twentieth until she was trapped on July twenty-fifth. Um, she could have been out there earlier, but the campground hosts were not there, so we're not sure how long she was out in the woods. We also received a plaque from Best Friends Animal Society, um, honoring our live release rate for twenty twenty-three. Which was above ninety percent. Uh, I don't have that right in front of me, but I believe it was ninety-three, and we've been above. Ninety percent, um, since I took over. I can't speak to previous years as I don't have those statistics. We're working on the fence project. So we have had three local companies come, um, and businesses come forward so far, so over three thousand six hundred dollars just within the first week. I did include a picture of what the fences and the units will look like. Um. Our current chain link fences were kind of falling apart, but they were pretty old, so these are sturdy or outdoor, um, and will last a very long time. And then we had stencils come in for a lobby project, so we'll be announcing that later on, but that's going to be a fun community project. And then as Lori mentioned, we have the August twenty-seventh city and county. Um, a picture there of the shelter staff with our notebook plaque. And some staff animals, they picked their favorite animal to take a picture with. And then animal control will be testing Wednesday, August twenty-eighth for the state certification. So that's just around the corner. And today we had twenty-six animals in our care, not counting a few strays that have gone home. Um, but nine dogs are at the shelter, one dog is in foster care, one adult cat and four kittens are at the shelter. One adult cat, seven kittens are in foster care, a separate litter of three kittens are in another foster home. Tomorrow, we have one cat surrender with five kittens coming in from the county, one adult dog surrender coming in from the county. Um, and maybe an additional adult dog from the county, but yet to receive a surrender from an animal.
Thanks, Kayla.
Any questions?
Hey, I just want to thank you for taking the time to give me a tour of the shelter yesterday.
Thanks for sending that.
Preparation for the August twenty-seventh, so thank you.
Did you come home with the dog?
Honestly, I didn't, I didn't.
Very, 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 very strong-willed of you.
You know, I'll tell you what happened, though, on my walk home, I found a stray, and I called the police department. And they showed up in about two minutes, and miraculously, the officer was able to get the dog to jump into the back of the car. And I think he found it at the shelter this morning. It's already been returned to the other. So happy, happy.
Well, we, we can now deputize you as an animal control.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for being here. All right, that'd be a city part of licenses.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so I'll start with business licensing, um. So mostly, I don't have too many new applications on this month, um, no renewals. However, I am working on a new application that is much more user-friendly and much more street-lined. Um, for our citizens for when they apply, um, I just feel it's a little bit more intuitive as far as the health process goes. And then we're also updating the website to include additional resources for local business owners, just as far as. Um, how to reach us and then what they need to do with the state and those other sort of guidelines. Um, the, the biggest issue, um, really I've had with business licensing is my software. Has, um, been causing a lot of problems where I've had to. Patedly for the last two weeks, reach out with their support team, so finally this morning it has returned to full operation, so I'm very excited about that. Um. And then moving on to our short-term rental licensing. Um, for the most part, I believe we're deciding to stay with the current licensing software. Um, they are working with us generally as far as. Um, fixing some of our bugs and rebuilding the platform, but then we are potentially going to contract with another company. But then we are potentially going to contract with another company called Deckard to aid in gaining and maintaining more of our compliance as far as the tax remission and things of that HR. And then I can let you know, my current waitlist for Class Two licensing is actually at eighteen still. And Class Two is unoccupied owner, you know, just to clarify. For marijuana licensing, we have no new or renewal licenses pending. Everyone is up to date with current fact. And then as far as liquor licensing goes, I was actually, I just met a state enforcement officer who actually came to the area yesterday. They said they were going to try and be doing a better job of their routine checks and just coming through and making sure of compliance. So I met our, our county local enforcement officer yesterday. He surprised me and said he was letting us know that he's doing some checks. And he should have a statement, basically a report for me that I can share with you all at the next department report session.
But that's, that's really good for our licensing.
So the, the current plan is to stick with GovOS for the licensing platform that owners and license holders would use. But to look at, continue looking at Deckard as a compliance partner?
Yeah, which it changes a little bit of the scope of work that we were thinking. But in talking with some other cities and with Ms. Bushman, working with GovOS a little bit more. I think we, the stress was switching the platform for all the users. We, that was sort of our concern. So we're happier, I think, with GovOS and Muni Revs. Not aesthetic, they understand things they need to work on. And it's not that any other city is in a different position. We got the same input from other cities that, you know, Muni Revs has its, has its positives and negatives, but that we decided not to switch for the user end, but just the enforcement. So hopefully, you'll see that on, I think, I can't remember, we ended up bumping it, I think, from this meeting to next meeting just because of the length. But yeah, hopefully you're going to be seeing that. It is on the tentative agenda for September the third.
Thank you. Any other question to Ms. Bushman?
It was a backlog of eighteen business licenses.
Oh, no, this is just um, short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals. Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And I would just note, if any departments have presented and they are, they are excused, so Chief Boyle, you would like to stay on, you're more than welcome to, but I note that once you've made your department report, there's no obligation to stick around and tell midnight. We're aiming for ten.
All right, moving on to building and planning.
All right, so just in terms of the building department, I did have a meeting with Lake, uh, Lake County Community Planning Development Department. Their director, Anne Snyder, this week. And just the main update is that the general trend is that building permit applications in terms of volume are down, but values are up. And the suggestion is that this is just indicating a trend in increased second homeownership, which I don't think is a surprise to me. So that's just the main update from Lake County Building Department. In terms of planning, I think I have six or seven just key highlights to mention from your five-page memo in your packet. So definitely a lot going on when it's one of my longest updates yet. In terms of pre-application projects, I wanted to note that they've had discussions over the past year regarding potential small annexation for what's being referred to as the cascade building. This is otherwise known as the M E C American Eagle load. Properties approximately a ninety acre property that comprises a significant portion of the east side that has a portion of the property that is outside city level limits, approximately an acre or two. And the property owners who had recently acquired the property are interested in bringing all of their property to the city, the city of Loveville Limits. They have requested to give a presentation to City Council on September seventeenth. And then I believe at that meeting, they, during their presentation, they would ask council about the possibility for scheduling a work session, knowing the council's going into a lot of work sessions with budget season. I advise the property owners that if, when they come to the presentation, that they should be prepared to, I guess, make a pitch for what public benefits that would be, that would be interested in proposing, knowing that affordable housing is top of the list. In terms of active applications, the main highlight is just what, what you know, just right across the street, eight fifteen Harrison Avenue, it's known as the Engelbach House or the Thurman House. We have an active COA application for a demolition of the rear non-assert portions of the building and, and addition on, and I also have facade restoration. This is one of the original few buildings, rowing nineteen sixty-one National Park Service designation for our, our Loveville District. So this is a project that will be evaluated very carefully. That's a very significant structure for Harrison Avenue. And that will be coming to you on your October first meeting. In terms of pending applications, the building permit application for the Chaffey Housing Trust twelve condominium building project that things are progressing, the right, just the status of that right now is their engineer, Chaffey Housing Trust engineer, civil engineer, is addressing comments from our consulting civil engineer before we issue slate plant permit, so they can start excavation. So getting very close. On Railyard and construction, just FYI, the developer has requested probationary acceptance for Mountain B Drive extension. So we have a, we have a subdivision improvement agreement specifically for that right-of-way work. And so this is totally separate from the phase one residential development that you see out there. We have inspected that. Our consulting engineer is working on providing comments back to the developer before we go into any kind of probationary acceptance for that. On terms of long-range planning and the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan, the main update on this is that we will be coming to you on September third, your September third meeting for a resolution for a partnership, partnership agreement with community builders. And we are building out the project teams. I want a lot more information to bring to you at that, that September third meeting. The, the ask would be basically to authorize the city administrator to enter into a partnership agreement with community builders and Lake County government. And then just final updates, just generally speaking for department, just very high volume. We kind of constantly have an email queue of fifty emails plus to respond to in terms of incoming zoning inquiries, et cetera. So we're, we're doing our best, but there are definitely some people that are, it's taking a while to be back to. We're trying, Alex will go full-time here in just a few weeks, or hopefully that will, that will help. Last comment is engineering. Our, right now I have twelve projects in our consulting civil engineers queue. So this is, this is trimming upwards and doesn't seem to be getting any lighter. So I may be, you know, coming to the council just to talk about the evolving of engineering services that the city needs and, and how well, you know, consultant can provide that. So that's it for me. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a question.
Go on.
On your report, Peyton, there's a line item under RV occupancy. I know that this is something that was very lightly discussed by council a couple of sessions ago. But your report says, planning department and community service officers will respond to complaints regarding RV occupancy only and only as my add, that involve life safety concerns. So code says no full-time RV occupancy on city lots. Are we? Where did that decision come from and what would involve a life safety concern?
Yeah, and I do appreciate the city council members who reached out to me. I know some of you I didn't actually respond to, but I, but I did read your emails. I do appreciate all good. But so the decision is to recognize that we have a housing crisis. The decision is to, at this time, respond with code enforcement for RV occupancy concerns or there are life safety, such as there is an electrical hazard that could create a fire. There is a concern of carbon dioxide if someone using a wood, you know, non-permitted wood stove. Those would be just a couple, couple of examples. I could give more on things that are great life safety concerns. So if the complaint was that someone was occupying RV in their backyard and, but that's all I know. I don't know how they're getting water, sewer, et cetera. Then we would have to just take that on case by case basis. But we will, we are, we can be committed to responding to someone was living in RV and there was a concern about safety either for, for the residents of the RV, other residents on the property, or the adjacent properties. We begin evaluating this very carefully and trying to bring more information in the future just regarding how other communities are handling RV occupancy, especially in mountain towns where we have housing crisis and we also have extreme climate. That's your question.
So we, is that something that we should address with code at some point then? Since it's spelled out in code currently, not to allow that? Sure, we're just not going to not, we're not going to ignore code, I assume, on a long-term basis. Is there a plan for, to address that?
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways that we can break this down. So I guess I should clarify that RV occupancy and the right-of-way would, 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 that is something that we respond to, period. So this was, I didn't really clarify all this, but this was intended for, you know, if an RV is parked in the back of someone's house, not, not an alleyway, not on a street where it's obstructing their affair.
But then it could be also in the front yard. It doesn't matter that it's in the backyard. It could be in the front yard, it's just off the street.
Yeah, and if it's within the right-of-way, even if it's off the street, that would actually be, would be a zoning code violation to go back to Title Twelve, which the police department can, can fully, it can certainly fully enforce. But in terms of zoning code violations and the use of the property for RV occupancy, well, I'm not, sorry, RV occupancy, we're basically saying that in terms of a zoning code violation, primary concern is health, safety, welfare. And if there is a health, safety, welfare concern regarding life safety, that is something that we respond to. But I think at this time, we're not recommending a code amendment until we have an opportunity to further that way, kind of what I said before, what other communities are doing to basically address life safety and, I guess, balance life safety of the housing crisis, affordability concerns, and, and community character.
So just to be clear, for the time being, if you live in an RV on private property in the city of Loveville and there aren't any life safety concerns, it's accepted.
And there, you know, now it certainly is assumed that, that, you know, what, all the things that you need to, to live in a space with a roof over your head and, and water and electricity, heat. All, all of those things are, you know, are not creating a safety hazard. And we do, and so, and I guess the city, you know, the planning department would not claim to be the expert in terms of life safety. So we would, that, we do receive that complaint, we would try to quickly as possible bring in fire department, you know, the experts in terms of, you know, the, the fire marshal, for example, for like an electrical hazard. So but that is, that is the direction that we are heading right now.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Thanks.
I'd like to talk a little bit more about our access to civil engineering capacity. I know you touched on it briefly and we have twelve projects in queue. My sense is that there are long time delays before we get a response from the civil engineer. I spoke to the city administrator, Simonson, last week. I think it would be great to have a civil engineer look at something like our streets and our stormwater management and come up with a solid three-year, five-year, ten-year plan. And I just don't know that we have capacity to do that with our current contract situation. So is that, is that something we can take up tonight? Or are you planning to talk about it more at future meetings?
Well, I think, I think, so, so, yeah, thank you for, for bringing that up. And I think most, most of what I am working on with our engineers, development review, so it's not necessarily getting into, getting into civil planning on, you know, on behalf of the city of Loveville. It's more like responding to development proposals on, on private properties. And so I would say that the, the quality of, of the responses, the development review that is happening right now is, is top-notch. Our engineers are very, very thorough. They're very professional. But good work takes time and we're not their only client. And so that is, and they, you know, and they are relatively small firm. So, so I think that, you know, we, I do have some concerns with customer services in terms of, that is an essential part of development review in, you know, site engineering, especially for larger projects, especially when it gets to, you know, we're doing larger affordable housing projects. And we are seeing, you know, things fair to say, some, some just delays with, with the Chaffey Housing Trust project. But getting to, getting to kind of these street projects, civil storms, storm sewers, et cetera. You know, these are things that were identified in our strategic planning exercise. And I'm sure that's going to inform our com, our comprehensive plan. So I think that through the strategic plan and, and through the comprehensive plan, it will both of us, you know, be happening in, in the next, you know, three months to one year, respectively, that, and those are things that are already being identified and that can help us prioritize going into budget season this year, how, how we want to utilize engineering services. And if we, if we need to bring someone in-house, that is a consideration. If we need to use another firm that has more capacity, if we need to communicate, you know, I think we would just initially communicate to our engineering firm that we need additional capacity, not just for development review, but for, for future civil planning projects.
All right, that sounds good.
Okay.
Good question.
Any other questions for Mr. LaChance?
I don't have a question. I'll just make a quick comment. Mr. LaChance already mentioned that community builders approach to coming up a comprehensive plan. And I just want to let everyone know, I attended my first meeting yesterday, I was staying for with community builders as part of their project management team. And I'm very impressed with community builders. I think they're taking a very solid stepwise approach to their process. And I'm also very impressed with how community-centric it is with the elected officials at the city level, at the county level, and also community at large. So I'm, I'm very much looking forward to working on this project and it's great.
Yeah, thanks for that feedback.
Yeah.
All right, so, and we're giving more, how community-centric they are. They've reached out to every audience that I would have thought to reach out. And I've taken that advice as an adjustment. Have given them that information and taken that advice and run with it. So extremely happy to see, especially the community members' portion of that outreach. It's easier to, of course, get us to be involved, but community at large is still very important and I think that they're doing everything one could to do that, at least. So it seems. So excited to talk about that in the future.
Awesome.
Hey, thank you. All right, I'm anxious. Let's see it.
All right, good evening. How are you doing there, Pro Tem? I'll just give you some quick highlights and then we'll move on from there. Colorado Trust, we are at roughly fifty-six thousand in interest earned through today. I know it's mind-blowing. It's exciting. As far as our revenues and expenditures, we're pretty much tracking year-to-date at roughly fifty-eight percent of budget through July. So that looks good. See, sorry, my mouse is slow. The big interview on this month's department report is sales tax revenue. I'm sure you all noticed the amount for July at a hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. And so when I got the reports last week from Lake County Finance Department, and it had the breakout that we usually receive, I don't know if you all see this as well, between the county and city portion. And so it seemed extremely low to me, so I did some digging and expanded on the report that was sent over. It turns out there were many payments that were sent over that didn't have the jurisdiction code. So I don't know if you've ever looked closely at the spreadsheet that they sent over, or sent over. But there's jurisdiction codes assigned to whether items purchased within the city. And then there's a couple of different jurisdiction codes that are for the county. There were many that were blank, owing roughly six hundred thousand. There were many that were blank, owing roughly six hundred thousand. And so on the reports, the ones that were blanked were sent to the county rather than the city. Um, so I reached back out to staff um to ask about those blank ones. And they have reached out to the state. So it was an error with the state's reporting in the dump. Um, and it hasn't been resolved yet. But once the state. Correct, makes those corrections, um then we'll resend the the reports. And we'll have a better idea of actual allocation. So um I'm confident that it was. More than a hundred one thousand dollars. So um I did reach out to staff. Earlier today to see if if they had any updates and um. As of this afternoon, they had it on, but she'll let me know just as soon as they do. Um, so those numbers we can expect to change. And as soon as I find out, I can shoot you all an email and let you know like where we're at. Um, and include it in my department report for next month. Um, let's see.
And that was an admission from the state, not from the county.
Correct, correct, yes. Um. That, those are the highlights that I have on my report. Um, if there's anything, any other questions that you have specifically to my report, or if you want to look at something else, please.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I just wanted to also uh mention that that CD that matured after. Eight thousand three hundred years of gathering one cent of interest when we invented. Uh, Ms. Yula invested in the Colorado Trust as well. So that uh is great news. And also, we are going to be working on the budget uh work session schedule. So that will be forthcoming. But those are the additional work sessions that we have for each department to come in and present about their budget. That happens after goals. But uh we are going to be working on putting that schedule together soon.
Thank you. Any other questions, your comments about financials? Already sales tax comparisons. You already mentioned that, right? So any questions or comments there?
And you can send that a intermediate update on that, which.
Yes, once I get the the information, um, I most certainly will. Um, and then I have entered all of the accommodations tax um for any payments that we receive through August seventh. So we're preparing the uh thirty-nine percent that goes to Lake County tourism channel um to try to get that check cut. Um, and then any strike laws, I'll just keep an eye on it and post those as they come in.
I was gonna mention that we were gonna let Ms. Yula go home rather than uh stay until resolution number forty. So if you had any particular questions about property tax, I think that everything should be addressed in the staff report. But if there was any burning questions, I did promise her that she did not have to stay awake that late.
I did notice in the accommodations tax chart, it's looking fairly consistent.
I did go, yes, I did go through. Um, actuals, so we've been working through um through audit. We're not quite wrapped up. Um, but just going through and verifying um everything. So as. With payments that we received early in the year, um I had to request those back to twenty-three. So for budget or for uh financial reporting. Um, so then I went in and cleaned it up just so we could kind of get a better comparison. So um.
Yeah, thanks. It's really useful to see that.
Yeah, seems to be be tracking um fairly well.
Indeed. All right, thank you. All right, the bills. Any comments or questions on the bills that we have paid? If not, we can mention to approve them.
That means to pay bills.
On a sentence. Roll call, please. Do we need a roll call or just a hall of favor? Hall of favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you all for that. And we are on to a presentation from the school district.
Awesome. Everybody, I just see, you know, I have a little hand out if he's going to take one and pass it. And I think. Magic of technology will bring up a couple of slides. So I've been asked to um. Present some context.
Do you need one of these?
For, I have one, but that's okay. I'll take them back. I've been asked to present some context for the school board's conversations about. Running a ballot initiative um this November, which is, in our case. Um, what's called a mill of the override. And um I know you all are more familiar than most with mills and property taxes. So that would be helpful. Um. I guess there's a couple of things I just wanna like own right up front. The first is that in a perfect world, we would have had a much longer runway to be considering a tax initiative like this. And I think I just, as the brand new superintendent, just have to express what I'll explain in my presentation. The urgent nature of our financial situation. And when I got into the chair in mid-June. It was just very obvious to me and our CFO that we have to take action. And so we brought that to the board right away. Um, so I just wanna own that this isn't a perfect example of planning for a ballot initiative and just say that we will. Do better. Um, but this was sort of an extraordinary set of circumstances. The other thing I wanna say is I know you're considering your own question tonight about whether the the city will run a sales tax question and. I just wanna say that the school board and I, I think, would never um feel that it's our place to sort of advise you on that, right? Like, we're making our own best decisions and we trust you to make your own best decision. And there's risk here for all of us, right? And we'll never know. That's the bottom line is we'll never know. The success or failure of any of these ballot initiatives. Will be what they will be and we'll never really know whether multiple or not sort of affected the outcome. And and I just wanna say that we have faith and trust in you as a governing body to make the best decision for the city. So. Um, awesome. So that is not the first slide.
True, so it's like.
There we go. That's what you want. Um, that's fine. This is great. Right here is great. We can start here. And I'll just tell you for the next one, is that work? Sure. Okay, perfect. Okay, so. I don't wanna be overdramatic here, but I do believe that we are at crossroads. Um, our financial situation and some of the pressures on the organization are really serious. So that's the first thing to say. Okay, next slide. Great. Um, the general state of the district is we have really great instructional programming, teachers and student opportunities. Like kids are thriving in our schools. Um, and we have new leadership in the district office and soon to be on the board. And I think we're really focused on stability, strategic decision-making and planning. Um, however, you know, this financial crisis is something that is impacting recruitment and retention of teachers. And we have massive sort of deferred maintenance and capital over. Excellent. Um, so why or sort of what is the exact sort of status? So our cash position is barely sufficient to maintain our operations. As you'll see in this next slide, um, we receive significantly fewer override dollars for our district compared to our neighboring districts. We Colorado, this is a sort of statewide problem too. We're really far behind in terms of per pupil funding. And Lake County has the fifteenth highest cost of living among a hundred and seventy-eight school districts. Excellent. Um, just to give you an example, uh the district portion of family health insurance in Lake County. Costs seven thousand dollars more annually than that benefit costs the Jefferson County School District. So.
Per teacher.
Per teacher, exactly. So we're.
Per teacher.
We're employees. So we're working, we're, the district's contributing fourteen thousand dollars a year. For every employee who's taking family insurance in Jeffco, they're contributing seven thousand. So it's um high housing cost, don't need to tell you about that. Um, we, so we ranked fiftieth in per pupil funding out of one seventy-eight. That may sound a little high. Part of why it is a little higher than you might expect is because we have a highly impacted population. Um, and we rank seventy-fourth in average teacher. Okay, next slide. Okay, millennial ride in school district world. Um, statute allows a small rural like us to ask voters for up to thirty percent. Above the base funding, or we call it the formula funding that we get from the state. So we get about ten point six million in formula funding. Um, our voters have already years ago approved about six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year in override funding. Which means the remainder before we would hit our cap is two point seven million. Now, don't worry, our board's not talking about asking the voters for two point seven million dollars. But that is the sort of headroom that exists under statute. So we are only using a sliver. That's slivers probably a little diminutive. We're using a small portion of our total available thirty percent. Um, okay, next slide. Okay. So this is where you can see that very starkly. And just to be clear, you ask the voters for these override dollars and they're restricted only by what's in the ballot language. And typically, it depends. It can be pretty restrictive or can be pretty general. Um. But you can see that these are per pupil figures. So um it's like a little fair play. Their voters are chipping in almost forty-five hundred dollars extra per kid. To our community, seven hundred and eighteen dollars per kid. So we're just really feeling this pinch. And I think a couple of factors, including all those COVID dollars, sort of have delayed this conversation and maybe masked it a little bit. But now that those dollars are gone, this is incredibly stark. And you'll notice that, you know, one of us sends a light of, you know, they're, they're sort of crushing us here at three X plus. The voter's contribution to the override. Um, next slide, please. So you can also think of the override as like a surplus, uh kind of like. Uh, a little bit of a raise on top of your total program. So remember, our total program's about ten point seven million. So the question is, in all of these other districts, what's sort of the bounce they're getting from the override dollars? And again, like in B V um and Roaring Fork in Eagle, they're getting twenty-five percent more. And Aspen and Park, it's even higher than that. We're getting a six percent bump currently. So that's another um just way of looking at the same sort of scenario. Um, next slide, please. You, I don't have to explain this one. Uh, fifteenth highest cost of living out of the hundred and seventy-eight districts. Um, next slide, please. Colorado is also really far behind. Uh, when you compare teacher compensation to professions with similar um. Uh, competitive wage, we are last. So it's really a tough market for teachers in Colorado. Next slide. And that's who, that's the teachers, the teachers and their staff that's the engine of the magic, right? With the school district has nothing without. So our investment in them is absolutely critical. Next slide, next slide. Um, so here's a couple of sta- um just stats um and interesting data. Starting salary in Lake County for a teacher is forty-three thousand dollars. If you go to Summit, it's fifty-four. Um, we've been working on creating efficiencies and squeezing as much juice out of the lemon as we can in our budget. And we just, we are at the edge of that. Um, where the only moves available to us are pretty ugly, like reducing staffing, consolidating schools in a really non-elegant way. Those are sort of not pleasant solutions. Um, next slide. Um, deferred maintenance is also potentially in the ballot language. Um, you've probably heard um some information about us consolidating two elementary schools into one. We actually don't have enough cash to do that right now. The mill of the override funds, if they were successful, would not fund that consolidation. We have other strategies that we're employing, selling assets specifically to fund that consolidation. The mill of the override dollars would be more directed towards staff primarily. And also um some of these sort of capital renewal and maintenance questions. Um, next slide. Okay, so the board is currently considering an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual mill of the override. They are still talking about that, though, and I do wanna make that clear. Uh, so that number is part of their discussion Monday night. Um, and then I think they're, they're gonna have a special meeting next Thursday. So they're doing the same thing you're doing, right? They're landing a plane and saying, what are we actually gonna do? But at the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year level, that is a dollar thirty-nine a month per a hundred thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Or six dollars ninety-three cents a month for a five hundred thousand dollar residential valuation. So that gives you a sense. And this is the, my last slide. So how you can be involved is sharing your feedback and having to answer questions. Help us educate our community about why we're doing this. Nobody, no superintendent wakes up on their first day and is like, let's run a mill of the override in a really terrible tax environment. That sounds fun, right? That, that's not a thing. So I wouldn't be here if we didn't feel that this was absolutely mission critical, like actually existential for us. Um, and then the last thing is, please let our teachers and their staff know that you care about them, that you see them. And that you know that they're important, no matter where all of this ends up. So that is my overview. Is that what you were hoping for?
Absolutely. Uh, Ms. Marley was kind enough to come, just educate us on the school district's need for the mill of the override. And I thought that would be really helpful for the council's later discussion tonight regarding dental stats pack. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, one question.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll start, we'll just go down one step. That's another thoughts.
Thank you. Um, can you talk at all about trends in student body population? I think I've heard that population is decreasing rather dramatically. And how does that affect your? Your mill of the override, if that's all.
Okay, great question. So that is true. Declining enrollment is an issue in the district as it is statewide and nationwide. Total program does impact, I'm sorry, declining enrollment does impact that total program. Sort of that base funding amount. So as your students decline, um, you get less in that total program. The mill of the override is actually not tied to enrollment. It is a straight-up. Sort of dollar amount that you ask for above and beyond. The only place the two interact is that, as you saw on the one slide, there's a thirty percent. Cap above your total program. So at some point, if your total program goes down, 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 down. That thirty percent number gets smaller, but we have so much room in our thirty percent. We're not anywhere near that.
O- okay, I think I followed that. I mean, at least some of the mill of the override is going to increase teacher salaries.
Correct.
It's on a far surrounding school districts and the rest of the free world. Um, but then. Well, so how does that work? So enrollment comes down, we have fewer students. At some point, you're gonna need fewer teachers.
Correct.
Paying them more. So that's good.
Correct.
So are we asking for so much mill of the override that we're gonna increase salaries for teachers that no longer exist? Because the student body population's gone down.
That's a good question. Like, is there a point where you're sort of uh like over-engineering a solution? And I would say the amount that we're talking about, um, absolutely, we're nowhere close to that. I will, I will say, though, like, our financial picture is complicated. And I do wanna be clear that if the mill of the override passes, we will be able to put significant dollars into compensation. That is a separate question from rightsizing our operations. Um, which still may be. Um, which still may be, you know, a, a move that we have to make because of the declining enrollment environment that we're in. But right now, our compensation is so far behind that, I, I just doesn't. Strike me as a place where, like, those two lines are gonna cross on the graph kind of thing in any, in any foreseeable future, but. This is a very complicated problem, and things like consolidating schools and rightsizing our staffing, those are true and those are real. And if the mill of the override doesn't pass, those issues don't go away, but. We're not talking about such a radical change in our operations that all of a sudden we'd be like sweating cash.
There's also like, a, a easy way or rather a gentle way to have those transitions and a. Less gentle or more extreme way to have the transitions, so, you know, it's looking at, like. As teachers leave, maybe not hiring for that position anymore, um, as opposed to firing teachers, which is.
Right, exactly, yeah, and Christian, thank you, we do have some openings on the school board, although I think you're, uh, otherwise engaged. Said it really well, and you've heard of both the mill of the override and the selling of assets. All of this is trying to prevent us having to make these rightsizing and consolidations decisions. Like a big stair step, we'd rather make them like a ramp. And these funds will allow us to do that, so maybe we run. You know, if, if enrollment continues to decline, maybe we, we have a couple of years where we run a little bit. Ap- extra, right, or we tell teachers, we're gonna hold you hard, or staff, we're gonna hold you harmless during this period of transition. And hope to make those moves through attrition, so.
So is there, um, how much flexibility is there in using the funding with no level of letting override? I know you said primarily teacher salary, but is there flexibility to use a product?
Yeah, so it's written, um, right now, it's written, um, with two uses, so. Recruiting and retaining high quality staff, so that's compensation, right? The second one is facilities, capital renewal and maintenance. The ballot language itself doesn't specify, like, a breakdown of how the funds will be spent. The board is considering a, like, a use of funds resolution. That would put its plan forward for the first couple of years, but what you do is you write the ballot language flexibly. And the board's considering a fifteen year sunset, I should mention that as well. Because we, the sunset would be before what we're hearing is the likely life of mine for climax, so. So in ten years, who knows what they're gonna need, so they'll have flexibility within those two categories. But the board is signaling and they're working on Monday night, they'll be talking about a resolution that says, okay, for the first couple of years. This percentage towards staff, this percentage toward the maintenance facilities capital renewal piece.
Okay, great, anyway, my last question, I already foreshadowed it, I'm interested in hearing more about the. Sunset provision for this mill levy override, and I wonder, you mentioned that we already have one mill levy override. Is that set to sunset at some point, and are we gonna have different sunset periods? And are we requesting up in this mill levy override to pick up what we might be losing in the first mill of the override?
Great, so the first override was passed, I'm gonna say. Does anyone ever remember that, I'm gonna say in the nineties maybe? And it was passed by one bus, I think. There were buses were in it and then maybe technology, it had a sunset. We went to the voters during my first tenure in twenty fourteen to Evergreen, that mill of the override, so it's Evergreen. So that's six hundred and sixty eight thousand is not going anywhere. This one, the board is currently considering that fifteen year time horizon with a sunset of twenty forty. But again, at any point, the board could decide, uh, in the interim to go to the voters and similarly say, will you please, I've agreed this. But that's a decision for a future administration.
Okay, got it, thank you very much.
We have such cute terminology for these little things.
Thanks, Kate.
Yeah.
I'm curious about the hundred fifty thousand. Cause according to the handout, that still fits as well at the bottom.
Yeah.
Again, so how did you arrive at that number and why are you considering that?
Well, it's a great question and one I think the board will be picking up on Monday night. Um, quite honestly, and, and I will say, like, you all have just done a survey with Magellan, right? That gave you a lot of good information, we talked about that, we've used Magellan. Um, the, and even at the deal rate, that was gonna cost us about eighty five hundred bucks, and to be honest, we don't have eighty five hundred bucks. So we didn't do a survey, and we've maybe regretted that recently. Um, because we don't really have a sense of what the voters will tolerate, right? So I think the board's initial eight hundred and fifty number was designed to sort of stay under a million. I will say though, that now that we've pulled this data together and really started looking at it, it is pretty stark, right? To sort of do all of this and still be like well behind the other surrounding districts, so. I, we have a board member here and he may wanna comment further, I wouldn't anticipate a radical change, but. Could I see them talking about a number that's different than this? I could.
Okay, um, I mean, so the one thirty nine, you know, if your ballot language forecasted that, like, the cost per. Is that in your ballot language, the dollar thirty nine per? Rather than the larger number. Right, so a dollar fifty nine, dollar sixty nine.
Yeah. I'm afraid that is not compliant, yeah. And also that number will change over time, right, because, um, depending what's happening with assessment rates and assessed valuation, right?
Okay, thanks. And in this case, it makes sense, uh, our conversations we had was use a number that's usable, and that was not as usable as the fact.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Bartlett?
I'll just open the door for, um, for inviting you, I'm sitting down, show you later this week?
Next Thursday.
Perfect, I sat down with Christian, I welcome, um, time to just meet with you individually on this or anything else you wanna talk about. Thank you so much.
Okay, that gets us through department reports and presentations, um. We are gonna take a five minute break before we get into our action items, so.
Are we in the meeting again because the city is on mute? There we go, thank you.
Thanks, Ellie, should I start over, I was just getting into the script of the, uh, public hearing.
You have to start, uh, always beginning a roll call.
Okay, I'm not gonna not take bad advice. Next on our agenda is a pair of ordinances, ordinance number three, series of twenty twenty four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Leadville amending title seventeen of the Leadville municipal code. Regarding housing density and variety of off-street parking requirements. And ordinance number four, series of twenty twenty four, an ordinance of the city council. Of the city of Leadville amending title seventeen of the Leadville municipal code to create a new chapter, chapter seventeen point nine four. Regarding development agreements. Because these first readings of these ordinances were noticed as a public hearing, city council will follow particular steps for each ordinance. Though each ordinance will be considered separately, I will outline the following steps that will be applied to the hearing of each ordinance. First, I will ask that city staff give any presentation or providing any information that they have to city council about the ordinance. City council will have the chance to ask questions of staff and have discussions with staff during the staff presentation. Next, I will invite the public to provide any comments on the ordinance that they would like city council to consider. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on the ordinance may speak one at a time and each person will have no more than three minutes to comment. Finally, council will discuss and vote on the ordinance. Let's begin with ordinance number three, series of twenty twenty four. Here we have a staff presentation, please.
Mayor Council for City Council May fifth, uh, first reading, um, this ordinance that had adopted would make provisions title seventeen. Would have been seven existing chapters with the objective of increasing housing variety and really incentivizing infill housing. Um, there's a summary of the amendments included in your, in your packet, in my memo, um, there are really eight categories of amendments. Um, which includes really the key amendment that would increase the maximum density limitations. For two unit development, so single family and A U or duplex, um, in four bar zones. Uh, this project, uh, this process has been through eighteen reviews so far, so fairly, um, fairly extensive process. Uh, that includes fourteen meetings of planning zoning commission and three reviews of city council. Your last review, um, was on May twenty first, I gave a presentation to you. Um, before we proceeded with the public hearing process, we've had our session before, uh, there was, um. Uh, unanimous support for these amendments by the council, there was, um, a great concern that was brought up regarding. Uh, short-term rentals and how, uh, I mean, this was really discussed at that meeting in the context of A U's, but should be noted here. Um, that this could really be for A U's and duplex units, uh, so we already had two minutes on one property. But there's a concern about, um, how our title five short-term rental licensing code. Um, allows A U's to, uh, their owner occupied, as you said, two, uh, owner occupied properties with two units. To be exempt from the maximum number of licenses, that you just recently caught, like, the hundred and sixty five licenses. Um, so staff did review this long, and there's a full explanation of all the applicable code excerpts, um, in your, in your memo. Uh, but long story short, there is an exemption, um, there's a loophole, so to say, um, that would allow, currently in your code. That allow possible owner occupied properties that have two units that are seeking, uh, one short-term rental license. To be exempt from that license cap, um, and also just kind of all those, those code excerpts that include your parcel. Should be noted that this is based on, uh, said, including your parcel, including your packet, are based on per parcel. So there are multiple references to property per property and per parcel, um, but the license is not issued to the unit, it's issued to a parcel. Which includes the events, that makes sense, parcel is interchangeable term for property in this sense. Um, so, um, I would suggest that we, we look at a revision to title five. Uh, the, the intent of this ordinance of order each night is, is of course to increase the options for long-term, um, residential occupancy. Uh, whether that be ownership or rental, um, that exemption that is in the code, uh, certainly could conflict. With kind of the purpose of this to create more residential units for long-term occupancy. Um, staff have, um, discussed this with the city attorney, the city attorney's office is, um, is, uh, looking at drafting the ordinance to bring back to you. It would, uh, that would not be an amendment to title seventeen, of course, uh, as is this ordinance, this would be an amendment to title five. Um, so the expectations of that ordinance would come to you in, in draft form, uh, for you in the coming months ideally. Um, on the heels of this one, to address that concern. There's one revision that staff and the city attorney have made, uh, which is noted in your packet and is highlighted. And that is an amendment to, or revision to the parking requirements. Uh, for, um, any kind of secondary units, a second unit added to a property, the amendment, since you last saw this. Uh, would simply state that the planning director, um, basically has the authority to determine if a public alley is accessible or not. Uh, is reasonably accessible and therefore subjecting the, the second unit, which would have a parking requirement, to the alley loaded parking requirement. P N Z did, did hold a public hearing on this last week, uh, P N Z was unanimously supportive of this. And formally recommended the city council adopt this ordinance on first reading. Um, I would also recommend you adopt this ordinance on first reading and schedule second reading for your next meeting, which would be September third, that would not be a public hearing. In your packet, I included red lines, since this is for providing seven different chapters, um, to make that easy for you to see, uh, what is being changed. And then of course, uh, the ordinance, um, in its full title, thank you.
Thank you, any questions for staff?
Just one.
Do we go to public comment next, actually, or can we have questions first?
Do you have questions for staff?
Okay.
Just one question, and I think I know the answer, but I just wanna make sure, um. If we were to pass this ordinance and people were to apply for licenses, which would be, I know, crazy turnaround for people, but. Uh, before we were to pass any modifications to chapter five. Um, in the modifications to chapter five, would the person who then applied for that license have to update their license to. The more up-to-date chapter five license?
Uh, I think I understand your question.
Yeah.
We cannot retroactively apply code, so there is that gap, potential gap period.
Is there another way to keep, uh, short-term licenses from slipping through the cracks?
No more than, no more than the current regulations and require.
Sorry, one conversation at that.
Uh. One tool we used previously to address that is a short moratorium. So we could look at. Doing a moratorium. Uh, I'm wondering, I don't know, haven't we did that before? I'm, I'm wondering if we could do the moratorium at the next meeting at second reading. And then that moratorium could be in place, because we did that before with off-highway deals. We did a moratorium before we were able to get the ordinance drafted and passed. And, uh, our city attorney at that time advised that about a year is, you know, how long. They would recommend the moratorium, the maximum time for the moratorium, so we, we could do that, and then that. Cover, would cover the gap in between the time that you pass. This ordinance on second reading and the time where we can make the changes to kind of that.
And just for a little, yeah, thank you, for a little bit of context here, we know the city attorney's office on this and. Uh, I'll just remind the council that there, the city attorney's office has, uh, given the city recommendations on, um. I wanna say a comprehensive amendment, but a very, a fairly thorough amendment to title five S T Rs. Um, that would accomplish a variety objectives, uh, objectives, um, it would base the. One of the, one of the objectives would be to reduce the city's liability. Based on recent court precedent for other jurisdictions, similar, you know, and some of them similar to ours. That, that have had lawsuits and have had challenges on their S T R codes, and so learning from those lessons and then making some minor tweaks to our code. That could reduce our, our liability, and while we were looking at that code, the city attorney's office had other, other recommendations, but they're all. But it takes time to go back and forth with staff on that, and we're, we're, we're just busy, and so we, we just, so the city attorney's office, uh, at our request. Separated those out of those on the back burner while we got the, the hundred and sixty five thousand cap ordinance passed. And then they have been just kind of waiting on us to initiate, re-initiate that, um, so we've told the city attorney's office to see how. Just take those, those previous recommendations into consideration with this revision that we're asking right now. And see, look at the timing of that and see if that needs to be, uh, if that needs to be separated out, which we have a second and a third phase. Or we can combine that if you want, because we don't want this to linger, uh, too long.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I do feel strongly that we should, you know, pass those today, um, but. Also with the thoughts of making sure that. Uh, it's with the intended purpose, and I, I feel comfortable with a moratorium, it sounds like it'd be short-lived. Uh, but I understand if that's too much of a limitation, um, for the time being.
Uh, I, I would say, you know, there's a little bit, a little bit on, um, the fly, but I've had experience in more moratoriums and I think, uh, staff. Would be supportive of moving forward with this ordinance with a very specific moratorium. Um, that is not overly broad, unnecessarily overly broad regarding short-term rental licenses. That are related to this two-unit development, two-unit properties. And, and this is, you know, without, uh, legal. And and this is, you know, without legal advice on on moratoriums, but I'm very comfortable with land use law related to moratoriums. And I think we can get some little legal advice after this, so we can come back to you for a plan for a very specific moratorium. So that there's nothing to slip through the cracks.
We didn't need an end date or could it just be pending or passing of the.
It would need an end and I think I think we generally would be that less than than ten months and we would we would give ourselves that. That that time period, but we would shoot the question.
Any other questions or comments? Would the moratorium affect people on the waitlist currently? Or would that be something we discuss when we discuss the marketing?
It would be, well, it's so if I don't think we would. We have any currently for the situation we're talking about.
I mean, because it's not allowed currently.
Tier one A U and those have no waitlist, so there is.
So, right, so we don't have any, we don't have any applications that have not been approved. So it would be applications that we would subsequently receive, if that makes sense.
And I think to provide just a few words of comfort, I think one of the, one of the. The things we must consider is that a lot of our properties do not have A D Us because the code doesn't allow it.
Yeah.
And so we've only seen in terms of construction of new A D Us or conversion of, you know, basements to a secondary unit. We've only seen, I mean, you can't count those on the top one hand, since I've been working for two years plus, so. So I think we're talking about a very small amount that would slip through the cracks if we didn't have a moratorium. So the number of properties that this would more turn effectively be very relevant.
Okay.
Right. Any further questions for staff? Hearing none will move to public comment. The initial presentation has concluded, members of the public will now have the opportunity to comment on the ordinance. We'll start with the people who signed up to speak before the hearing. Is that anybody? Okay. Then I'll provide an opportunity for anyone who did not sign up to speak. Remember, each person is limited to three minutes for each of their comments. Would anyone in the room like to speak on this? Anybody online?
No, there's at least one member of the public that would like to speak.
Great. Do you know who that is?
That would be bottom row, second from right.
Dan, Dan, would you like to speak on this topic?
Uh, sure. Um, my name's, hang on, let me run downstairs where there's not kids and dogs. Sorry, girls? Oh, gosh. Speaking of the need for an A D U, if I had one, I would just go out to that room quick. Sorry, they're usually like that. So my name's Dan Northcraft, I'm a local home builder. I own a few lots in town, I actually live in the county, but I think everything I've built. Has been in the city. So I've built some A D Us, I've got some things that could be an A D U coming up. And I guess my experience with them has been that those are all rented, some by me, some by the owners, maybe all but one. Are rented to long term residents, I think the space is good value for buyers. I think it's something that the market can provide without being subsidized. I think offhand, almost everyone that's renting an A D U or a lockoff. Is a local employee that would be competing. That this expands the supply, so they're not competing as hard with other locals for housing. I think in the past, there were concerns about parking and snow removal, we really have not seen that be. A big issue driven primarily by A D Us, I mean, parking and snow. Is always going to be an issue in Leadville, but I don't think there's a. You know, they don't, they don't have a significant impact in that, and I guess bottom line is this is a way that. You know, the market can provide some units, they're gonna be primarily along, you know, with the. S T R ordinances, they're primarily going to be for long term tenants, so I think it's an. Easy win in the midst of a housing crisis that this is a way more units can come online and. You know, not solve the housing crisis, but add some supply and maybe reduce it. I guess I should add that I, these recommendations are probably, as you know, I think the PAT, long before I was on it, the policy advisory team came up. Three-ish years ago, so this has been on the stove for a little while to to try and push this through and. Make people more able to build some, something for the community. So. And I guess I probably, if you know me, you've heard that I worked for Habitat for Humanity for ten years, so I feel like this is, you know, I. When I worked for a nonprofit, it was, you know, we could really dip down into lower A M Is. Right now, I'm signing all the personal guarantees. So this is a way that the market can provide some of this and I can provide some of this that's unsubsidized.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it, that's your three minutes, thanks for your comment. Anyone else online, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, hearing none. Move on to city council discussion followed by a vote.
What's the public hearing section, the public comment section?
Okay, do we need to do that? It's not in the script.
Hear what council member Vess said.
Do we need to close the public comment period of the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. We have a hand. Peter Sargent, would you like to comment?
Ooh, just under the wire.
How do y'all, I'll be very brief, but. I'm a brand new homeowner in Leadville and the home that Dan built. I just wanted to chime in to say that we'd be very excited about the idea, we currently do not have an A D U. And. Full, you know, appreciate it, I'm a real outsider, we live on the front range. But just wanted to. Share support that, you know, from our perspective, if there was an A D U, we would be so excited to have a long term renter. And the hope being that that, you know, could help. Solve two problems that from our perspective would love to have somebody who's there, who's around all the time and also to help provide. Affordable housing in the town. So just wanted to chime in and and vocalize that.
Thank you, and would you mind just stating for the record your name and address?
Peter Sargent, address in Leadville or residency? Six eleven East Twelfth Street.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah. Anyone else online, go ahead and raise your hand if you'd like. Okay, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Best moves to close the public comment section of the public hearing.
Tom seconds.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to city council discussion and vote. Any points of discussion in council members?
I feel comfortable with the response that you're giving to us. Especially if it's pointed towards the specific need for a moratorium. And grateful that we're finally passing this.
I agree, I think it's going to be impactful on. The supply and and create available units which. We desperately need right now.
Agreed. Well, unless there's any other discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Council member.
Thank you.
Council member Luna Lam moves to adopt ordinance number three, series of two thousand and twenty four, an ordinance mending Title seventeen of the Leadville municipal code. Regarding housing density and variety and off street parking requirements on first reading. I further move to schedule a second reading of this ordinance for the regular city council meeting of September third, two thousand and twenty four.
Best seconds.
Well called, please.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Vess.
Yes.
Mayor Green.
Yes.
Council member Thar.
Yes.
Council member Edwards.
Yes.
Council member Luna Lam.
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted to say thank you to our planning director and staff, this is one of the first projects that we got when we were right there, so. Scaring the policy advisory team for the years of work that they put into this for a long time.
All right, Mayor Green is applauding. Love it, yeah, thanks, everybody. Okay, moving on to the second ordinance of our public hearing. See, we'll move back to the script. Let's move on to ordinance number four, series of two thousand and twenty four, and we can go to the staff presentation, please.
Mayor Council also for you tonight on first reading. Is an order that if adopted would also amend Title seventeen zoning of your municipal code to create a new chapter regarding development agreements. And this would be for the two primary objectives of. Allowing mechanism for the city to receive public benefits for land use applications. They cannot otherwise be legally required to retain. And that would be in exchange for flexibility provided to a property owner or developer. In the city's zoning standards. And that would be, that would be considered an amendment provided in exchange for that public benefit. So just a couple characteristics of this development agreement ordinance. So this would essentially be a contract between city council and a property owner or developer or builder. This would be for city councils discretionary use, so in other words, this is a legislative process. It is not a quasi judicial process. So under no circumstances are you obligated to approve a development area. And it totally at the council's option. Once that contract is of course executed, both parties are obligated to provide those commitments. There is a requirement that once a development agreement is approved, that it be insigned, that it be recorded, the Lake County Government Recorder. So this would show up with a chain of title on the property. Even if it has an expiration, which would most likely be a period of above two, six years. That that development agreement would be available in the public records. Aside from the city's collection of ordinances. As we discussed this previously, the May twenty first presentation, but just to revisit the the key terms of a development agreement. It's in front of you and that would be to authorize a developer, builder, et cetera, property owner to provide three categories of public benefits. So that would be housing, the restricted housing, could be land, so that could be in fee simple form or that could be in form of easement. And then also public improvements, that could be construction of public improvements such as streets, sidewalks. Crosswalks, forms of infrastructure, et cetera. In exchange for those public benefits, the city could waive certain zoning standards. So that would be the density, so the number of units that can be on a property, that's expression of intensity of use of a property. Building height, density building height are two of the challenges that we foresee we would. When when affordable housing projects come through and are really trying to make the project pencil. The projects usually need to be more dense and they need to go up higher. And that is often, that's a challenge that we can expect we would face with private affordable housing projects and public affordable housing projects. And then also extension of vested property rights, so that means that when we approve, whether it's a conditional use permit, a site plan. Even if it's an historic, a certificate of appropriateness, we would be able to approve with extension, basically. Extension of vested property rights, meaning that their permit would be valid, could be available beyond two years, that's especially important when a project's supposed to be phased. Like, for example, if there's uncertainty, if we're going to be able to get affordable housing units on our contract. And we might need to do a second phase or a third phase extending that that time period for the permit beyond the standard period of two years. So those are the key terms. At your May twenty first presentation that I gave to you, it's an opportunity to give you multiple opportunities to review this. The council was unanimously supportive. In your packet, your provided packet does not have any substantive changes since that. And to the terms and conditions since the the previous presentation. I do have one, I would say is more than a recommendation is suggested. This is something that I think that we we should include in as an amendment prior to second reading. And that will be regarding real estate transfer assessment. So that is not a tax, so the acronym will be R E, real estate transfer assessment. And provide lots of background on this prior to second reading. But the city staff and the city attorney's office has identified this is. An important benefit, public benefit that we could include in development agreements, and I would suggest that it's oftentimes a supplemental public benefit in addition to housing or addition. In in addition to land or infrastructure. That in some situations can be no skin off the off the developer's back, so to say. But that what that would authorize is to provide a funding stream. For that would most likely go to the regional housing authority, and all of this can be spelled out in terms of a development agreement that you that you enter into. Where when a property owner is developing a property through that development agreement, they would commit to recording an assertive comment against their property. And that could be with the first sale or it could be with the second sale of a property. That would probably a one percent fee is is kind of standard where where when that property closes, there's a one percent. Fee paid by buyer seller that would go to the regional housing authority for future housing projects, programs, et cetera. I would suggest that we add that in second reading, we discussed this with the city attorney's office and they're fully supported. And we can provide, we can invite, you know, court case precedent, et cetera, all the legal background for that prior to second reading.
Just one, this is a really important tool that we we brought up a little bit with regard to the Leadville seven consultation, but. It is a assessment, it's not a tax, so it is not something that needs to go before the voters, but it is an incredibly valuable tool to raise money. For affordable housing, and so in essence, it is just an assessment of a fee every time the property changes hands. It's a very common tool, if you were, if you were a. If you had it in place before Tabor, you are in great standing, means you can have it as a tax, many jurisdictions have it as a tax. We would not have it as a tax, we would have it as a fee. But is, it's a fantastic tool to generate income.
Long term, there he comes.
Recorded with the D U, it's a tool that the county is working on using as well.
Yeah, with their interview project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for staff? I would support including the real estate transfer assessment option. To be included for second reading.
Be as well.
I agree.
I have failed to mention that the P N Z, our hearing on this unanimously recommended approval, adoption of this ordinance, staff does as well. And this would continue running concurrently, it's just with the housing variety code package, so again, second reading on September third.
Great, okay, any other questions or comments? Or sorry, just questions really for staff? Okay, so we will move on to the public comment. Period on ordinance four. Would anybody in chambers like to speak on ordinance four? Would anyone online like to speak to ordinance four, if so, please raise your hand? Okay, seeing none, I would. Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public.
Oh, sorry, I had to run back downstairs. I haven't studied this ordinance. I haven't, this is Dan Northcraft again. I haven't studied this ordinance. I haven't been nearly as involved with this as ADUs, but. I think if you just want my general perspective as being a builder um and trying to make. And I guess at some point a developer um when I was on the front range trying to make this work, it's like. Scratch and claw to get a budget that can actually make a project go forward. So. For the city to have a little more flexibility to do stuff like that, um I think this gives you some power to get some more projects done um because. Just at the end of the day, again, on even subsidized things, it comes down to, is there going to be any money left for all the risk we're taking when it's time for this? Project to be finished. Um so if there's a way the city. Can offer a few more things to get to the finish line, I think that would be a welcome change.
Thank you, Dan.
Sure.
Anybody else online would like to speak? It entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Best moves to close the public comment section of the public hearing.
I'm a seconds.
All in favor?
All right.
I. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on to city council discussion and vote. Any discussion points? I guess I should have saved my comment for this part where I said I support the proposed. Addition of the R E A for second reading.
Dan holds the handle.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. Um yeah, I would just i- in part like to mention to Dan Northcraft's. Request and and question, it's, there is a lot of, even though the. Modified requirements available, that would be up for. Um entering a de- development agreement, there are. It was a lot of, there was a lot of decision making that went into setting these quote guardrails um and and not to make it sort of open season on anything. There are um some, there there rather, there is some flexibility in section seventeen point nine four point oh four oh D, which is. Additional increases in height or gross density approved, maybe approved if. There is a specific finding of public need and public benefit, so it isn't really. It there there is some flexibility built into it, although the the constraints, the the so-called guardrails were um. Were were highly discussed in uh both in planning and zoning and and it in the other times that it's come before council.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other points of discussion? I will entertain a motion.
Uh this has to be an amended motion, is that right?
Or no. Uh for each motion, it sounds like the council is humanously supportive of a um. An addition of a public benefit of a R E A prior second reading.
Yes.
Is anybody opposed to? Love it. Should we include that in the motion somehow?
No.
Okay, the record shows.
Yes.
Great, okay.
You could include it in your motion, just, you know, make a motion to approve with amendments as discussed.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. That sounds good.
Edwards moves to adopt ordinance number four, series twenty twenty four, and ordinance amending title seventeen of the Louisville Municipal Code. To create a new chapter regarding development agreements on first reading. I further move to schedule a second reading. With proposed amendments of this ordinance for the regular city council meeting of September third, twenty twenty four. Luna L. Seconds.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Green.
Yes.
Uh Councilmember Bass.
Yes.
Uh Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Thar.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
And Councilmember Luna L.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, next on the agenda, we have an approval for. One zero one one Poplar Street, but that has been withdrawn, is that correct?
Correct. This was publicly noticed for this meeting, uh so we needed to leave it on the agenda. Public hearing self planning zoning commissioner last week. And uh the applicant uh following that meeting last week uh formally withdrew their application. Uh just a bit of context here, there um was an access discussion regarding um essentially an alley that's not an alley. And the connection of that alley that's not an alley to what is an alley uh to the west of the property. Uh so there were the issues the staff identified, maybe these were related to access. Parking uh and general interest in progress. Um and are all of those issues, uh the act, the the access issues to the alley go away. Uh but the applicant has uh the decline to proceed to city council, um declining to continue to further discuss with staff. Um for a kind of resolution and uh all of the P and Z recommend of that. So that his application has been withdrawn, but it was publicly noticed. Um but that is all that we need to.
All right, thank you. Moving on to. Agenda item number ninety, further consideration of resolution number thirty eight, series of twenty twenty four. The resolution of the city council of the city of Louisville submitting a ballot issue to the registered electors of the city at the city's special election.
Okay, great. And um Mayor Putnam just wanted to note that our public comment policy on this is for matters. Um on the agenda, which are not a public hearing, at the discretion of the mayor, Mayor Putnam. Public input can be heard prior to a vote being taken on the matter. So I know we have some people here for public comments, so I just wanted to know what the schedule would be. So I think uh staff report first is your preference.
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh so this uh is back before the city council, and I I think you can see in the staff report. That this has been something that the city council's been working on since March. And I appreciate your patience on this. I tried to summarize our our history as best as possible how we got here. I think you don't need to be, you know, recap with that. I think the most important new pieces of information are that. Um S P V Swims informed you during public comment, they have decided to pursue their own uh citizen initiated pass and sales tax. So we will be working, the city will be working with P V Swims to uh facilitate that, and we will be bringing back before you. The um uh proposed ordinance for that. So I'll be working with our city and turning on that. So. That's one piece of information that you didn't have last time you saw this. The other piece of information is that um. You you know, we had a presentation from the school district regarding their mill levy override, but that was important information for you all to have. Considering that everything will be on the same ballot. And uh I think it was important for you all to hear the need for that um mill levy override and the. You know, the potential length of the ballot, we uh uh Deputy City Clerk Bushman and I met with. The um county clerk who explained that this is going to be a very long ballot regardless. And that municipal measures go last. So getting people to navigate to the end and therefore now knowing that there will be two other tax measures on the ballot. So those pieces of information. You now have, um I think. It's important also to note that the city had a strategic planning town hall on September thirteenth, where the public was allowed to identify. Some priorities that were important to them. And I included that information in your packet. The top four priorities narrowed down by the public were expanding economic and business development. Housing opportunity uh was number two, number three was roads and streets. And number four was city and county collaboration. Uh so. The discussion regarding early childhood care and education was not one of the priorities identified by the public. I mean, it's not a priority, just trying to focus on what new information you have since the last city council meeting. So those are uh three, the my number three additional pieces of information. Uh as you can see, the uh staff report. Our staff's recommendation is has given the change in landscape, that we now recommend that uh we. Follow the general recommendations, the sales tax task force, that the city um. Postponed consideration of the sales tax measure, put out a broader coordinated effort. And look at bringing that forth in a subsequent year. I do think it's important that we hear the community and what they are saying, and I think one of the things that we are hearing from multiple places, not only Magellan Strategies. But the strategic planning town hall and just general input in the city probably needs to focus on some of its core needs. Um and so, you know, obviously what we have heard is road and streets and potentially deferred facility maintenance is um rising to the top of that. I think that uh it is important to consider the rest of the landscape, and I think it is. Probably worth considering that uh should other ballot measures fail and the city runs their own tax, we will always wonder what would have happened to those other measures should the city have not run its own tax. So I think given all those factors um in meetings with multiple community partners, and I think many of them for being here today. Is that um you know, we had the mayor and I had some uh hard decisions about staff recommendation, but. I think it's our recommendation that we do need a city sales tax, that is clear. We do not want to be left behind. I think Councilmember Thar had an excellent point about communities, especially uh rural reserve communities being left behind. And that is my my job is to make sure the city is physically responsible, and I think at some point we do need a a a city. A city sales tax, I think it should be for a broad enough of a purpose to cover things that are important to the city or the community. I just think that um this, uh I appreciate the school district um, you know, uh explaining the landscape that. That it is not the in the best always interest to run things on a short run uh runway. Sometimes you have to. Uh I think we gathered all the information that we needed to get to a good point to make a decision, so I hope I put enough information before the council tonight. Um to be able to make an informed decision. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Comment, less than a question, but I I just. In regards to the two studies you've stated, um I I. I don't necessarily sincerely disagree with the outcome that staff had made, but I do disagree um wholeheartedly with. The assessment of viewing um that one town hall as a full. New point of the community, given who was there and who wasn't, more importantly. Um and Magellan Institute did highlight that there was still a a need or at least an appetite for childcare. Um funding in our community specifically for our sales tax, but I just don't want to have that be a takeaway that we go with. Uh from this, uh from that staff report that said, of course, like. Wholeheartedly understand the recommendation.
I I hundred percent agree, and I think that is really the essence of what the sales tax task force came back with, which is we need to really look at this. Uh a little mu- mu- harder and have more time to figure out what the potential needs are. And uh I think with a little bit more time, we would be able to come up with. Categories that I think. Re- uh represent the community, because absolutely, I think the strategic plan, the strategic planning town hall is one data point. I do not think it is. Is a data point of the people who had the time and capacity to show up to one meeting, and I think that that is fantastic that we got such a great turnout, but I. Do not think it is representative of quote unquote the public as a whole of our community.
Generally speaking, someone needed to chat here, they're probably not going to show up for that meeting.
Yes. Yeah, so.
Yeah, great. Let's let's have any other questions for staff and then go public comment, and then we can have council discussions. So any other questions for staff? Hearing none, I'd like to open it up to uh public comments. In the chambers, we'll have Grayson first.
Hi.
If you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Grayson Cooper, one twenty five West Seventeenth. Um I'm also on school board, and I want to be clear that I am here as myself, um not representing school board, representing districts. Um thank you for your thought, all consideration of this. Um I know you've spent a lot of work, not just tonight, but over a lot of months leading up to this. Um. I guess I'll just start by saying. Usually, um I'm much more verbose on Monday things, so I'll be brief now that it's Tuesday. Um. I I think, you know, the the biggest point um that I think that that I have in my mind is we have the right people in the seats now. And and the uh school district came in to really lead us forward to meet this challenge at the moment. Um and I really believe that the outcome of this election is existential. Um I believe that will determine what education looks like um in Lake County for the next decade, and it will. Um impact the next generation of Louisville as a whole. Um so I just ask that we come together as a community and support our schools during this truly critical time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Grayson. Anyone else in chambers like to speak? Go ahead, Carly.
Thank you, Carly Sailor, three oh one East West Streets. I am the executive director of Build Generation. I understand that I made it into your packet, so um some of this might not be new information to you. Um. Councilmember Thar, please keep me to three minutes. I know the landscape has been shifting quite a bit as you've carefully considered this question. And so I want to just acknowledge and thank you for your careful consideration, particularly from the sales tax task force. I know that there's a lot of things and moving parts that you've had to. Um be aware of and consider in this decision. And a few weeks ago, um when the city was considering a sales tax with P V Swims. That also changed how my organization, Build a Generation, was thinking about being involved in this conversation. Now that P V Swims has decided to do their own sales tax, um we have a different perspective, and so I just wanted to provide more context to what you may have seen in the memo. Um and before I do, I just wanted to say a little bit about our organization. I know that many of you work with us, and I know many of you, but for those that don't. We're a collective impact model that builds coalitions across sectors to come together to solve big problems that no one entity can solve on their own. So I heard John referencing the policy advisory team, that is a team that's out of the housing coalition with Build Generation as an example. Um. But we also have the Food Access Coalition, the Youth Coalition, and the Childcare Coalition. And as many of you probably know, in January twenty twenty one, BAG, B O C C, and. Um DHS moved quickly to better understand the childcare needs in our community. This coalition was born from those efforts and has continued to work closely together to try to figure out a long-term systemic solution to the childcare crisis in our community. Um a thriving community needs affordable, accessible, and high-quality childcare options, and in Lake County, there are several barriers to creating a sustainable and robust system. Some of these challenges include an insufficient number of childcare slots, difficulty recruiting and retaining staff for the programs that do exist. And minimal programs that are both affordable and high-quality. The three known early care programs have a combined capacity to serve only a hundred twenty seven children and only during the school year. That existing capacity provides care for just over half the children who need it while their parents work. Um and I say all that just to illustrate that this is an issue that impacts our whole community, not just parents and young children. Everyone depends on someone who depends on childcare. Um and so this is a critical issue that affects our whole community, including local commercial businesses um and other folks in. The city. All that to say, childcare is an absolutely critical need in the community, and I really appreciate the city's attention to it. Um we've created a lot of different funding streams to address the issues that we're facing, and again, we're looking at long-term solutions, so. Um I don't, I yeah, okay, so I appreciate your consideration, but I don't think that this is the right time to pursue this, and there's three reasons for that. First, um. I want to highlight the needs that have already been highlighted by our school district reps here. The mill levy override um is an urgent need in our community, and we have a lot of urgent needs in our community, so we need a strategic. Long-term collaborative approach that prioritizes the needs sequentially. Um I hope you've also looked at the housing needs assessment that came out and showed the the financial burdens that are facing all of our community members.
Be done, thanks, though, Carly.
Okay, great. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Um thanks for your time.
Thank you. What do you and Allison Chambers like to speak? Go ahead. Well, who did it? Did P V? Well, who did it? Did PB Swims do like this? No, some other group did like this perfectly sequential thing, so I don't know. Next time. And would you state your name and address for the record?
Lauren Barrett, seven to seventh street. Oh, God, this isn't for me. Um I um let's see, so I'm on the board of Bright Start, so I'm very involved with childcare in the community. Um I also am working contracting with the city to think about the community centers, so I've been in a lot of conversations about what the sales tax could be fundraising for. And I'm like very excited to have more funds to do all kinds of projects in our community. Um I would just say that my opinion is that we can't tackle all things at once in a community this size. And it would be my opinion that we would come attack taxation as a larger strategic conversation. It's not just us in the room. Um and with what we heard from the school district today, it sounds like that is maybe the more urgent issue we have in front of us, I think. I'm not a professional tax analysis person, but if if people are given many options on how to get taxed, they may choose to vote for none. So my opinion will be, and the way I will be walking around this community for the next few few months is to focus on one initiative at a time. And I think we we heard tonight that the school district's initiative is a bit more pressing. Um Break Start, for example, like there, yes, we need to expand childcare, but we have funding to get through the next few years, so childcare could be the priority maybe next. We can talk about that being the next year's issue, and it sounds like this year's EU um is more about keeping our schools open, so that's my perspective. Thanks.
Lauren, you didn't mention that you were on the sales tax task force.
And we thought we do not have to say that.
Thank you, Lauren. Uh anyone else in chambers wanting to speak on the sales tax? Go ahead, Brian.
Well, I hope you all are having a wonderful, cool summer evening. Uh I'm Brian Revellis. I'm here as an individual representing no entity, and I would like to thank you all for the work that you've been doing to make sure that our community goes forward and uh does proper planning with long term. I am here to just kind of suggest that uh we have a general strategic focus on supporting the school district. Uh because although this will be city sales tax, it will affect the broader community. And uh we have a lot of uh individuals in our community who may be a little more at risk uh based on their financial situation, economics, socioeconomic status. Uh we have a lot of community members who live here because they can't afford to live anywhere else. They've been pushed out of Eagle County and Southern County. And we have the highest relative population of Latinos inside of our community compared to our neighbors. So I would suggest that we focus on the school district's efforts to allow them uh to have a good shot at being successful in their uh mill levy. Because during an election year, usually more people come out uh to vote, and if there's a lot on ballots, that's going to overwhelm people, as was mentioned. Nasa's paralysis, you see something, you might not want anything uh on there, so I would just encourage council to think strategically in the long term. I do believe that you are on the right path thinking about this ballot measure. However, be strategic about when it happens, because if we do not have a school, then a lot of our minority populations will suffer. And where are they to live if they cannot live here? Uh this has always been the place where people go because they can't afford to live elsewhere. And also, a lot of those who have the privilege of participating in these conversations are usually those who have a historical privilege, either due to who they are as just a white individual, someone from a higher socioeconomic status, or someone who has the ability to vote. So I would uh encourage you all to think about those who are not able to have a voice in this conversation. Just be strategic about when this ballot initiative goes out, so that the school district may have a chance at succeeding. Especially given the shortened timeline that uh it sounds like three potential uh ballot measures might go on, so. Thank you all, and I believe you will make the best choice, given your circumstances from the data you have available. Next, Brian.
Anybody online who'd like to make public comment on the sales tax consideration? Please raise your hand if you do. Don't see anybody. Anyone else in chambers? Hiding behind a pole? No, it's just Grayson. Okay, uh city council discussion time. Councilmember Best.
I have kind of a lot to say. Um so all this work we've done since March um was really an effort to collaborate um with PB Swims, with the county, and I think we we accomplished that and came up with something really good. But as has been mentioned, the ground has shifted considerably even since we made our recommendation. So Lori uh mentioned this, but I want to really emphasize it that the sales tax task force had two recommendations. One, since our hand was pressed by PB Swims, was to um come up with a collaborative one percent sales tax uh for this year, but the much larger and I think um more important recommendation was this coordinated, collaborated, collaborative effort to come up with a um a taxation and funding strategy with the county, with the school district. That was really a more important uh recommendation, I think. So while you all know that I've been the advocate that Leadville needs a city sales tax, um I think we need a way bigger one than one percent. Um now is not the time to do that. I think there are two reasons that I'm pretty strongly reversing my position. One is that the news that PB Swims is running their measure anyway um um is the biggest reason. It would be a huge mistake to have two city tax measures on there. It was mentioned last, our last discussion of this, the possibility of the city perhaps running their own half percent and letting PB Swims run their own. I think that would also be a huge mistake. Um I think the community needs to advocate as one for the school districts um mill levy override and just make sure that that's solid passing. I mean, all the other reasons that have been mentioned, that the the ballot is already going to be very long and confusing. Um Trace Laritzen told me it's already five pages long, I believe. Um that it, there needs to be a really strong grassroots separate of awareness on two things, really, the debruising of the housing authority and the mill levy override. So I want to advocate very, very strongly that we do not pass um a ballot measure tonight.
Mr. Best. Anyone else like to speak on this?
I'll I'll say that I really appreciate the work with this sales tax task force. Uh uh thank you. I had to slow down. Uh I really appreciate the work that you all did and appreciate um your initial recommendation that we really need to take a little bit more time with this and figure out what it is we want the city's sales tax to do. I think we're also just at the beginning stages of really thinking about the uh survey results from Magellan work at the beginning stages of our tra- strategies uh session, our comprehensive plan, thinking holistically about what the community really desires. And I think once that work is done, which will take a period of months, we'll be in a much better position to move forward with the sales tax.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would. Yeah, thank you. I would say I just want to, you know, echo Rebecca's gratitude to the sales shoot tax task force um and the work that you did, and I think it's really it's really easy here to fall into a sunk cost fallacy because so much work has gone into developing the possibility of a sales tax for this year. It's felt very pressured. There has been a tremendous amount of behind-the-scenes activity, um and it would just be really easy to be like, how can we turn back now? But I do think that pausing means that this work isn't necessarily for naught. I think it helps lay the foundation and the groundwork for a more, you know, a larger chance of a successful measure in the future. I think also turning our efforts and supporting the um school district's mill levy override um is important, and I think that putting setting aside the efforts for what I do think is a very valid and needed request for a city-based sales tax um may also um, you know, improve the uh improve the chances for successful partnerships for community um outreach and a community campaign um in the future. So I've been all over the map in my feelings on this, but at this point, I'm resting on putting a pause on a sales tax measure and letting some oxygen back into some of our other important work.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I am of like mind. I would advocate for us not proceeding to put a sales tax measure on the ballot for all the reasons that have been expressed. Um I'd like to speak to the child cared need a little bit, and last council meeting, I talked about how if we, if we don't bring public funding to childcare now, we're moving that down the field for a future um need, because we do need to bring some kind of public funding and and strategic plan to funding childcare in our community. Granted, it did not come up as a priority at our um strategic planning town hall, but what did is economic development at the very top. And childcare is a critical part of economic development, so I think it it fits squarely in there as a top priority. Um I do serve with Lauren Barrett on the Bright Start Board of Directors, and had a recent Board of Directors meeting. Um all of our board members said we agree that it's okay to wait a few years. We have a few years' worth of ARPA money that will allow us to maintain our current capacity. Um but if we want to grow capacity, which our community could use, um we will need to find other funding streams, and unless something changes at a big state level or something. Um I also think that as we approach taxation from a strategic perspective, childcare is something that could be funded from an accommodations tax along with affordable housing. So if we wanted to consider pulling it out of the sales tax world, um we could maybe address that through increasing our accommodations tax, which we could still double from about five percent to about ten percent and still be within regional norms of our neighbors. Um so that, I think, is something worth considering. My idea with Councilmember Best that that the recommendation of having a strategic plan is a really valuable thing that came out of that task force, so um just wanted to you know, lift up that that need in our community, but agree that this is not the time for the proper strategic goal.
Can I say one more thing about the coordinated and collaborative we recommended? Um I do have a concern that once this election cycle is over, that um we're not going to start addressing that um soon enough. The um the finding of the task force, was that really needs to start now?
This year.
This year. Um so um I mean, I can understand possibly waiting until all advocacy measures for the MLO and and the election cycle is over, but like at least um putting something on an agenda before the end of the year about a plan to at least begin those discussions with all parties. I think I would feel more confident about those things happening.
Reestablishing task force?
Please no.
It will be interesting to figure out what the convening party is, because I think there's various in our community that it could be, and some are already in existence that would make.
I'm just kidding. I would, I would, I would support.
Oh, yeah, I totally ignore your response.
Okay, any other discussion? Not an entertain a motion.
Councilmember moves to deny resolution number thirty-eight, a series of twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Leadville submitting a ballot issue to the registered electors of the city at the city's special election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, in coordination with Lake County.
Edward seconds.
What call, please?
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Middle Nail?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Dart?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for everybody who made the time to be here tonight and give input and um help us move forward. All right. So moving on now to resolution number forty, series of twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Leadville authorizing a financial contribution to Full Circle of Lake County offer mortgage and rental assistance within the family resource center program.
Hi, I uh had prepared about an hour and a half presentation on that. Uh we had several presentations previously by Full Circle. Uh D W I Travis came and presented regarding the programs that they have in place for housing relief, and so where where we are right now is this is the actual resolution that will provide the funds. Uh our finance director provided the uh information that we are, where we had budgeted our taxes to uh for twenty twenty-four. We are approximately two hundred and ten thousand dollars in excess of the budgeted revenue, so um that number may change slightly. Those were estimates that we have received from the county. I think we may have just received the actual check today. So with all of our taxes, the county gives us an estimate based upon um the numbers that they have, and then we get an actual check, which is represents the 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 actual funds. So what we had um discussed and proposed was that we would look to see once we had received the second half of property taxes for the year, most of the payments coming in um by now, that we would have a better number of what money we would have in excess of our budgeted revenue, and then we would be able to have a proposal. Um the mayor and I met with Ms. Contreras, and we uh proposed a number of two hundred thousand dollars. It is in line with what we had been contemplating. The county provided three hundred thousand dollars, and Full Circle has already expended all of those funds for housing relief. So this money would be very, very helpful for them to continue this program. And I think um it really goes to the debate we were having is how best to provide housing relief and not reinvent the wheel, and having Full Circle have a program that's already been established where they vet applicants, and they have a program that's well-known in the community. We don't have to create that structure, so it is a way for us to provide targeted relief. So one of our other options was to provide a reduction in the mill levy, but it doesn't, that would provide a reduction in property taxes for all property owners, which would include second home owners, um short-term rental owners. We wanted to provide targeted relief to property owners who specifically were in need. And staff's recommendation is that this is the best way to achieve that, and uh I know Ms. Contreras was, had another commitment this evening. I was texting with her just a moment ago to let her know we reached this point, and I know she's driving from Denver, and so I was she's here. Okay.
Hi, sorry. I didn't want to interrupt. I'm here.
So I just wanted to let you know that she's here and available to answer any questions. Uh we did not ask her to do another presentation because she had already made that presentation. So with that, uh I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a comment, um I strongly support uh these safety net funds, but I don't want us to lose sight, and I know I have to be careful here, that the advocates asked for the creation of a homelessness fund in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars by the city to be included in our um strategic planning. Um so um strategic planning. Um, so the, you know, this right now, while we're trying to solve this housing crisis and associated homelessness crisis and housing insecurity, housing instability, there is this need for for basically what's categorized in the field as homelessness prevention. Um, relief rental rental assistance relief to keep people in their homes. Um, there are a lot of organizations in our community doing that work right now, including C four. Um, but I, so I just don't want us to lose sight of that. I think this is really, really important. I think Full Circle absolutely is going to spend this money very, very wisely. Um, just would ask that we keep some of those other asks that are forefront of our mind as well.
I guess I'm, I'm a little bothered by this. The funding is coming from property taxes. Property taxes went up enormously and caused a huge problem for people to pay the property taxes. So have we given any consideration to trying to provide relief to the people that are paying the property tax?
Program does help with property tax as well. It's not just rent um or um any other, it is also property tax. And I believe that they have helped with property taxes. Is that right?
We can pause that question.
Sorry, can you repeat that? That this will be, I think what I heard is, will this be used for property taxes as well?
Yeah, it's my understanding your program does provide assistance for property tax as well, right?
Yes, that is correct.
How does that fit in with the rent relief for renters then? I'm just, I'm not following all that.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, please. It's your program.
So I was just gonna say, so we, um, when we first created this, which was when we got the funds from the county, uh, we spoke about how this was just contributing, whether it was um to pay, so the rental, if the owner of the property was um putting on the increase of the taxes raising by raising the rent for somebody. Um, right, so it wasn't at the actual owner of the property. Um, but the person, the renters would be able to apply for assistance and then that would contribute because their their rent has just gone up. Um, and then for mortgage assistance, it was sorry, I'm not, I don't think I'm explaining this well. Pretty much it was the overall budget of the household. Um, so if we could, this could offset, if they were just applying for rental or for mortgage, this could offset um, another household expense so that they would be able to have money, funding for um for their property taxes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that response. I think the other thing that bothers me about this a little bit is it's um it feels very much like a Band-Aid. Two hundred thousand dollars is not going to go very far to help people pay their mortgage or pay their rent. And I, I believe I understand at the state level this temporary reduction in property taxes goes away in twenty twenty-five. So it seems like very much a Band-Aid measure. And I wonder if we're better off thinking about spending this funding constructing additional housing, putting this money towards the Housing Authority, for example.
Uh, well, that's actually a very good question about the temporary nature of the uh the, the state legislation that went into place in response to the reassessment of values, so property tax values uh, property taxes went up because assessed values went up significantly, just based upon the popularity of of living here. In response to a lot of that, the uh governor called a special session last year, as you recall, and there were um, key pieces of legislation that came out of that. And part of that was to address specifically the impact on single-family homes. And so there was that legislation that went into effect. So property taxes were projected to go up astronomically. Then this legislation passed, and so um that was, uh, you know, within in working with our city attorney's office, we sort of said, let's just see how this comes out. And what we, what we were trying to figure out is how effective was that state legislation in reducing property tax burdens on single-family homes. So uh, just so you know, the governor has planned another special session to look at legislation that would address the impact of property taxes. So what I think the longer term solution is potentially going to be a statewide solution to this temporary Band-Aid. And so what we're doing is trying to react to the changing landscape. And I I appreciate the fact that I I always like to say, well, maybe not necessarily creating a precedent with the things that we do unless we specifically state we're creating a precedent. So I think in this case, there was a lot of debate about what should we do? And then the state legislation passed, we said, okay, well, we could still reduce the mill levy. But that isn't really targeted relief. And so this was the solution that um the city came up with, or at least proposal for for this year. I think we are maybe going to be in the same position again this year with our budget, where we were you know, we were guessing. So when we estimated increase in property tax revenues, we we did not use the numbers that were coming out at forty-seven percent and so forth. We, we, well, some cities were looking at, we just said that's that's crazy. There's, there's no way we're going to budget for that. So I think you're right. This is absolutely a temporary solution. I'm hoping that there are better longer term solutions, but we'll have to see what comes out of the special session.
And if I may, for the Regional Housing Authority, we're not in a position to use those funds, nor will we be in any time soon, to be honest. Um, as you may have heard, uh, we did have recent turnover. We're going to be hiring. Uh, we're going to be working on the guidelines and we're probably just going to be working on uh, operating uh the deeds and running those deeds for the recently um the, yeah, the lottery system that the ten-two-hundred um project is at the county. So the money wouldn't really go anywhere. Additionally, we do have three hundred thousand dollars as a council that we have allocated to the Regional Housing Authority. Yeah, that we need to still have a discussion on. And um, I, as a Regional Housing Authority Board member for the City Council, I don't think the money would be well spent there. And it would be much more effective um going towards this Band-Aid certainly, but still relieving program for our community members.
Like to go to Mayor Green online, is that a hand up?
You very much. I just also wanted to add that in prior years, at least as long as I have been on council, we have routinely ended up collecting less property tax revenue than we budget for on the order of about ten to eighteen thousand dollars annually. So the fact that we entered this very uncertain landscape of what was, you know, what was going to happen with a history of not needing our property tax revenue budget. Um, i- it's really unusual that we ended up, I think, with all the reductions in the estimated property taxes, that we still ended up make, not only making our budget, but exceeding it. And I have zero expectations that this is going to happen again, because it is not our, our usual situation. So I feel pretty comfortable, you know, not, not, uh, directing this money back to the people most impacted in terms of uh housing and how property tax valuations have, have, have skyrocketed, how that, how they are impacted by this. I think I did the, the calculation, if we took that two hundred thousand dollars and we turned it around, distributed it evenly for all the residences in Leadville, like it would come out to just over a hundred bucks a household. So I think the potential impact of this is is quite grand. Um, I think this may very well be a one-time opportunity. Um, and you know, we'll see what happens going forward. I think, like Councilmember Best pointed out, there are, there are numerous, and there are always going to be numerous valid requests, but this um, this seemed to be within the wheelhouse of what um, what excess property tax revenue um would be um, would be beneficial for our community.
I, I, I'm very aware of the sort of sentiment that a, a social safety net is sort of a Band-Aid cure. And it's, it's true that it's not solving a problem. But the cost of not having the Band-Aid is people being evicted. Yeah, advocates have gotten ten referrals just in the last week of people in need. Our housing crisis is creating evictions. People are getting evicted because a sudden expense arises that they can't afford, that they have to not pay their rent. And one of those right now is property taxes. Um, so I, I definitely understand the, the sentiment, but I think Band-Aids heal. And right now, we, we need a lot of Band-Aids.
Also, it is significantly more expensive for, uh, I'll speak for C four, um, for people to be homeless, um, rather than have just helped them with that, um, rental assistance upfront.
Yeah, thanks, Christian. There's a ton of data on this, that the most effective way of fighting homelessness is to prevent people from becoming homeless. And we do that with the safety net.
Which currently, as Tim has mentioned, there is high risk amongst our community members, the regional, or sorry, the housing needs assessment highlighted that in numbers, but in terms of anecdotal data, I've worked with clients who are currently facing such situations that if assistance isn't provided to them, they will be evicted. And um I mean, the families, and we're in August, and it's already getting to the thirties and night. So I, you know, anecdotally speaking, definitely see the immediate need for this uh, immediate Band-Aid, so to say.
Oh, a completely different note, I'm not comfortable utilizing our entire property tax surplus for this. I'm not sure that we actually have the budget to do the full two hundred thousand dollars. I think we're stretching ourselves awfully thin coming into an extremely challenging budget season. I understand the need. I don't think it's a wise I don't think it's a wise use of those funds, at least not all of those funds.
Um, to Joey's point, are we, our excess um property tax revenue is what, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Right. So I think that um, finance director briefed me today, it is two hundred and forty thousand. And we have, you know, obviously, you know, there could be more payments that come in before the end of the year. Uh, but that's the excess right now.
So two hundred thousand.
One over one to nil.
Okay, so two hundred thousand still leaves forty thousand that were over budget. And that number would only go up, not down, right? Mia, uh, is anyone from the public wanting to make comment on this? Um, if you're on line, go ahead and raise your hand. Surprised nobody who was in chambers earlier stuck around for this one. I think they would have had opinions, but they left. Okay, uh, any other, any other comments, questions on this?
I, I just advocate that we vote on it as currently stated. I, I think, I, I see Joey's point. I think there is a little bit of room there and possibly more by the end of the year. So I'm comfortable with passing the two hundred thousand. Does it have to be unanimous?
No, majority.
Thank you.
I'm also comfortable with two hundred thousand for that reason.
Is there another alternative there to put forward some lesser amount at this point in time? And then make another decision later on in the, in the year as we get into our budget and really decide if this is the best use of our funding.
I feel like if the motion were to fail, we would go back to that conversation of, or how can we make it pass? We've done that before.
Yeah, so uh, someone could make a motion for the resolution as it stands, or someone could make a motion for an amended uh resolution with a different dollar amount and a vote can occur on whatever motion comes first. And if something fails, you know, councils had it before where a motion fails and you try again.
Finding the sweet spot, yeah.
Could we try again tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this, I mean, the matter has been a, a properly put on your agenda. Our agendas don't have to be specific down to a dollar amount. So the public is aware of what you're deciding tonight. If you dramatically change the subject, that's different.
I would be entirely comfortable with a resolution at fifty, an amount that doesn't completely drain that surplus. At this point, I am not comfortable with it. I think it's not a fiscally smart move.
I propose we vote that stated. All right, I can run the motion and we'll see how it goes. Councilmember Lumen Land moves to approve resolution number forty, series of twenty twenty-four, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Leadville authorizing a financial contribution to Full Circle of Lake County to offer mortgage and rental assistance and property assistance with the Family Resource Center program. Yes, seconds.
We'll call please.
Can, can I just have one clarification? Sorry, it says a financial contribution. Are we to understand that that means two hundred thousand dollars?
Correct.
Yeah.
Very good. Got it.
Okay, okay. Any further comment? Uh, we'll call please.
Councilmember Thomas?
No.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
No.
Councilmember Lumen?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hill is answered.
Thank you.
Just thank you, Ms. Contras, for being here so late in the evening. Do not have to stay for any more of the meeting if you do not want to.
Thank you so much um for, for having me here. Thank you very much. I just want to say, um, you know, we, we've done this before. We, um, our Family Resource Center coordinators are very well trained in it. Um, Full Circle is not keeping any of that money. We are in a strong fiscal position to be able to continue with salaries and everything we do. This is all going back to, to the community. Um, thank you.
Thanks, Adelia.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, so moving on to public comments, friends not on the agenda. Or things that were on the agenda. Would anyone online like to make public comment? If so, please raise your hand.
I know.
Yeah, or Steve. Okay.
Wait, is Steve Prashash not here? Has someone checked on him?
I saw him this afternoon.
Thanks for the reassurance.
Well, moving on to the mayor's report. Mayor, if you have anything, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mayor Protem Tharp so profusely for leading this meeting tonight. It is, it is really just not possible to do a reasonable um, meeting from a remote position. So thank you, Cisco, so very much. That was extremely well done. You're also getting done far before any of us estimated, I think an hour before my estimate. So careful, like I said, y'all are going to send me out and make Cisco.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to have the opportunity.
I do want to say, I, I do want to um just thank everybody who was able to come to the town hall regarding um city priorities. I thought it was a great program and really good discussions sort of spun out of that, even if they weren't personally, even if they weren't precisely aligned with finding the priorities. It really spoke to me about the benefit of having um, community town halls or community communication. It was, it was really gratifying. Um, so I know Lori included our four city priorities. In the packet, the next step will
In the packet, the next step will be that um our consultant will be contacting all of us and the department heads to start ferreting out some goals that fit underneath those priorities. So I look forward to seeing what fruit that bears. Um, I think that's about it. I'll be back in town Monday.
Thank you, Mayor. Council reports.
I've got a quick one, please. Uh Historic Preservation Commission, in conjunction with History Colorado, is having our second uh open house meeting. It will be September tenth from five to seven, and it's going to be a sales tax credits, excuse me, a state tax credit. Wow. It's a tax credits workshop. So how to apply for state tax credits when you're restoring your historic home. Uh in in this one, we'll focus on residential, not commercial uh tax credits. So anybody can join us, or if you can help us put the word out, it really will be a beneficial uh seminar. And the first one that we did on researching your historic home was incredibly well attended. I'm sure this one will be as well. Bro, we do have a flyer and I can email it to everybody.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jake, and I'll put that together.
Sure, the mission is just working away if you don't.
Ryan. Thank you. Anybody else? Councilor?
Yeah, um if you're interested to hear discussions about um who or rather what the process will be for hiring a new developer or sorry, executive director for the Regional Housing Authority, please uh be tuned in to tomorrow's meeting at five thirty for the Regional Housing Authority. Um, you know, it's not the first time I say this, but I will, once again, um remind you all that um this entity is supposed to be a standalone entity. And um I'm grateful that we're able to coordinate with everyone who exists with the entity. But I think it's essential that we find the right person who'll be able to really stand this authority up with the uh current board um to the fullest extent. Um I uh will mention Jackie Willhand has stated at previous public meetings that her role has been very, very confused with um the county and Regional Housing Authority and what hat she wears. Um so in terms of um thoughts, eh that is certainly something that goes to mind for making this decision and how that will operate. And I hope council will take that in mind as well. Um as well as the community at large as to what that means and what steps we needed to make to really come together as a community for this specific organization to help it stand out as an organization. Um and create those safety rails uh for all of us. Um additionally, um as of today, the Board of County Commissioners did vote to approve the energy assistance funds uh to the tune of fifty uh thousand dollars uh in addition to the uh already existing budget, meaning that our programs for the energy assistance fund is now open. Um once again, uh and we are also considering um having conversations with folks who are interested in larger than five thousand dollar uh repairs to their homes uh for potential deeds. If anyone knows anyone who uh deed restrictions, sorry. If anyone knows uh of anyone who is interested in either of those two, please send them my way. Um happy to connect offline in terms of that um and that resource connection. But just so everyone's aware, a program will be operational once again. Um and we are looking for people who would be interested in um the deed restriction program. Um Lynette, that's about it?
Is there a regional meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Christian. Anyone else? Great. Uh, public meetings planner?
There it is.
So, do we have a meeting on the twenty, August twenty seventh?
Yes, it's a work session.
Work session, okay. It's not on the calendar.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it is.
It's a joint work session.
Six o'clock, City County.
Yeah.
August twenty seventh?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the city website calendar. Is that the last calendar to be looking at?
No, there, we're, I thought you were talking about the public meetings there.
I don't have the public's meetings planner in my agenda.
We have an updated agenda.
I was being good and not looking at my emails.
So we can make sure they uh
Okay.
I would also like to add that um you may recall in August, we did not have a Laura board meeting because of some schedule conflicts. So this is the odd situation where we do have a Laura board meeting on an odd numbered month. So September fifth, six P, September sixth, you know, sorry, September fifth at six P M. Um i- it's really important that everybody who can tune in do so because uh we are always in need of a quorum. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna use a quorum for you.
September fifth is gonna be.
Everyone present will be there.
No, all that's.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions on the meeting planner, public meeting planner?
No.
Okay. The time is nine forty four.
Is the gavel falling?
And the gavel will soon be. This meeting is adjourned. No, I said ten.
I usually just add forty five minutes to whatever's on my chapter.
Didn't Sarah think?
Ten.
Oh. Was it Kate? It is Kate.
That's all right. Yeah, I know you were like.
I've been excited.